Your sound is breaking up.
You're freezing somewhat, Taylor.
Taylor's broadcast is breaking up. Your, your, your signal seems to be weak, Taylor.
But your facial expressions look great as they freeze.
That's good. Are we online?
Yeah, we should be.
And on broadcast, Audra?
Yeah.
Let's convene. Good morning. That's the first time I've ever said that in the select board. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting, a special Select Board meeting for April 25, 2020. We have a published agenda and three items. I'd like to immediately go into the agenda unless there are any questions on it. And in that regard, the, like the, with the board's approval, address the third one first, which is this discussion about the June 9th ballots election. I'm sorry, tentative selection of that date for the ballot, a secret ballot. We have a couple of choices here to do, to, to be able to move forward on this one. One, we can, you know, of course, discuss, you know, setting a tentative date of June 9th if we so desire. If we, if we agree. Two, we could even, we can also, there's, there's so much flailing around out there right now in terms of what might come down or what might not come down from various avenues that may affect our decision making. Seems to, you know, Kev is trying to balance this, or, or not having to make the decision today is what I'm saying. We could always table this and, and, and continue, absolutely continue with our current activity, but continue to evaluate the, the selection of the date, which could logically very well be the July 14th, when it's presumed that the secret ballot for the state will be held also. It's one of the continuing judgment calls we have to make. Like I said, it doesn't relieve us from what we need to get done today, and I'll have Audra comment on that in a second. But it, it's, 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 we have a lot to do today, but Audra, maybe you want to make a comment on that to, what, what your input is on that matter, please, especially in terms of continuing.
Yeah, I would, I would say that I think we lost Allison.
Oh.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, let's wait a minute.
I'll say there's nine participants.
She was doing a lot of stuff. Here she comes. Now she's sideways.
She's sideways now. Hi, Allison.
So that if I need to leave the room, the kids are doing something. Is that, am I sideways still?
You're much better. You're fine. You're fine. Let me, let me, now that you're back in, did you miss? Did you miss anything? I, I was just talking about the agenda.
Yeah, I think I missed a critical thing. You said, let's start with something.
Yeah, but, but right now, as the agenda was, you know, correct agenda has three items on the budget, the town warrant, and of course, discussion about June 9th, which is item number three, I believe. I don't have it right in front of me, but I didn't pull it up. And I'm just suggesting, I wanted to talk about item three first on the agenda, and then we can move to our activities on budget and town being warned. And what I was saying was, we have a number of options on this, on this agenda item regarding June 9th. We can certainly proceed with discussing, you know, setting it, setting it as a tentative date. By the way, we could always change that in days or a week out if we wanted to. Alternatively, we could table this agenda item because of a lot of, you know, there's just mounting uncertainty, like what might be coming down or not in terms of the July 14th secret ballot. That said, even with, if we decided to table it, and we could always jump on it again next week if we had to or whatever. But given that, it, it, it seems we're really addressing here is to continue with the idea of having a total secret ballot, which combines the, all of the normal elements of, of our town ballot, plus the town meeting warrants that we've been discussing today. And we can, and, and from discussions with Audra, no matter what decision we make on this agenda item, we need to proceed with items one and two today to make approval on that basis. Audra, at that point, I turned, was turning it over to Audra to make a comment.
Yeah, and I, I would say that we've got, it was already really uncertain as to, you know, the best path forward in terms of town meeting and elections. There's just been another added layer of uncertainty with the, it's, it's fairly certain. MMA has put out something saying this, and I've spoken with other people who have been involved in this, that the governor is going to issue another executive order clarifying, you know, elections and meeting and budgets and all of that. You know, all those sort of issues that we've been grappling with next week. I don't know exactly when, and I have no idea what's going to be in that executive order, but you know, it adds another layer of uncertainty to everything we're talking about right now. So I would highly recommend that, you know, we kind of proceed knowing that we're, we're probably not going to have a secret ballot. You know, or we're not going to proceed with the elections in June. However, we still, I, I would still highly recommend that you make three important decisions today, which is whether or not you want to proceed with an all-secret ballot town meeting, which I recommend you do because we, there's still so much uncertainty as to whether or not we're going to be able to do open floor town meeting. The second one is finalizing the Select Board's budget recommendations. And then third is also, you know, approving the warrant for the secret ballot. Because even if we do have extra time, I think logistically, we're still going to need it to get all of the components, you know, everything sorted. And depending on what is in the executive order, we might need to come back to you and make some changes. So I would still recommend that you make decisions on those three things today.
Before we jump into it, I wanted to ask the person who already just raised his hand, Bill Kelly, to comment on what we just, what we just said. What's your perspective, Bill?
Thanks, and it is a moving target. I just wanted to read a paragraph. This is yesterday's update from the Maine Municipal Association regarding their, their, the topic. The, the title of the topic is "Working with the Governor's Office." So this is the latest as of yesterday, and it's a little instructive, and it, there's one interesting point in here. Maybe more than one, but at least one I'd mentioned. So it says, "Since last week's update, one of our focus areas has been conveying municipal needs and issues to the governor's office. Each week, we provide a punch list of municipal issues to senior members of Governor Mills' administration during a conference call. Remaining at the top of this list is the request for an executive order to clarify local elections." Here's the part I find interesting, "such as authorizing municipalities to conduct absentee-only elections, referendums, and reducing from 60 to 35 days the timeframe for approval of a ballot question." MMA also seeks a number of changes to the procedures for conducting the July 14 elections, including requiring absentee ballot, balloting only. We're hopeful that the governor will issue an election order soon, an executive order soon, I should say. So, yeah, I, I agree with everything Audra said. It's unfortunate or fortunate that the timing is as it is from the governor's office, but it seems like we're only days away from something directly on point to give us more tools to work with.
Well, that, that said, Bill, to, you've, you've obviously tried to define a gray area to us, and it's not, it's been a real challenge, but if, if we were to, for example, decide to table this discussion on the election date today, and just approve, you know, the idea of a secret ballot, does that change any of your thinking in terms of our potential liabilities or concerns regarding the confusion with the charter and the open town meeting that you've talked about before?
No.
Select Board comments. Taylor?
I, so that's a great update from Audra and Bill. I actually think that is, is potentially good news to help us and everybody clarify. I think the, the most difficult thing was trying to read the tea leaves for what the legislature intended and, and, and the best way to move forward. This week, I have been growing, you know, more weary of trying to make things happen in June for a number of reasons. So hearing you guys correctly that, that likely the, the path forward, that, that may be the simplest, depending on what the governor says, is planning on July 14th. And wind up more next week and be able to nail that down. So I guess my question is, if we don't say today, absolutely need July 14th, can we afford to hold off on that, thinking that that's a likely scenario? And then sometime, when next week after that order comes down, we can make that final decision?
I mean, to me, Bill's shaking, he said, I would have to agree that, if you said correct. The, it's, it's kind of like, you know, we keep trying to guess what's going to happen tomorrow. And by the way, tomorrow, we're guessing what's going to happen tomorrow, and it's going to continue that way. So I think, you know, the probably, in hope, best rest of your opinion, it seems to me, feels, feels to me as if we're really talking about, well, tabling the date, but just an agreement on the secret ballot for the town, which is, I mean, total, I'm talking about the big secret ballot. The, the combined, you know, town in, open town meeting stuff we normally do, plus, plus the budget to go forward with our current schedule, to, to get that done and ready for whatever date it is. And, and there's no, we don't have a lot of leeway to play with that, but yeah, I think so. Mark, you had your hand up.
I actually look, trying to look at this from a local perspective. We're trying to guess what the governor and the state are going to do to try and assist everybody in what they're doing. I think we're, we're prepared to okay everything today. I don't think changing the vote from June, what is it, June 9th to, to July 14th is going to change anything that we've prepared at this point. And the only thing it will do is we'll go into an uncertain situation. We still don't know what that's going to be. Even if, from what Bill said, what the government's going to do won't change how we conduct our ballot, really. You know, we can maybe do mail out everywhere, all absentee. But what we do get by moving ahead now is we get the town in order, we get our budget in order, so that, you know, it takes a lot of the headache and extra work off of the town staff. So that we're prepared to move forward regardless of how everyone else wants to do it. And we're taking care of our town. And I think that's more important than worrying about what the governor's going to do, what, you know, Portland is going to do, what other cities are going to do. We're prepared to move forward. It will be an assistance to, we'll know where we are. It'll be an assistance to our town employees in a, in a tremendously difficult time. You know, it, it's hard work conditions for them now. If we wait to delay the budget, it's going to be even worse. So I think we move ahead now because nothing else changes except the date of the vote. We're prepared to move forward now.
Taylor?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I, I totally agree with that. You know, there's no reason why we, we need to finish the budget today and have all of our work completed. It's just a matter of, of setting the date is the only uncertainty.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's correct. Other comments, Allison?
I mean, I mean, part of me feels that I was hoping to, to leave the discussion for, of when to do town meeting until the end because my main concern with moving forward in June, even though I like a lot of aspects of it for the reasons that have been discussed, my main concern is, is the rush of that. What we're doing right now feels somewhat rushed, even though we've all spent a lot of time in with the Budget Committee and in our own heads, thinking about the budget. It wasn't until yesterday afternoon that, that I had, we had something to look at with all of the Budget Committee lines filled out, and then looking over the warrant language and it seems things, you know, things are changing so fast with the, whether we can mail it to everybody unsolicited or whether we can't. And so if we're not, if, if we end up not doing the, the town meeting on June 9th, part of me feels like we might benefit from a little bit more time. And that won't, that won't necessarily be clear to me until we've gone over the budget together as a group. I don't know how many, I, I kind of know what's in my own head about the budget, but I don't, I haven't talked to many other Select Board members about the budget. So if we have serious disagreements or our conversation reveals that we need more information or that will, that will push me more towards wanting to, you know, delay it and, and maybe have one more meeting to discuss. So I don't think we can decide right this second whether we approve the budget today or not.
I, I agree with Allison. I think we should go over the budget first. And then, once we figure that out, where we are there, make the decision about the vote. And, you know, I think we should dive into that because that's really what we're, we're here for.
Yeah, I agree.
The bird, what Audra was saying was, our job today, correct me if I'm wrong, Audra, is to approve the budget and to approve the warrant language, assuming we approve with going with a total secret ballot. Is that correct?
Well, you know, I'm always going to prefer that you make a decision sooner rather than later. So, yeah, I mean, I, my, my hope is that you're able to, you know, make a decision today on your budget recommendation and the so that we have more time to.
It's just, why don't, why don't we just dive into trying to accomplish that rather than deciding ahead whether we, we, we may have a bunch of disagreements and need to talk about things more, or we, or we may not, and it'll be easy, but let's just dive into getting, getting to work on it.
All right, to the issue of approving, going forward with a total secret ballot, I believe we should act upon that agreement or not to do the, to do the, Taylor, your hand up.
Well, yeah, I have a comment on what you're, what you're asking when you're ready for it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do like the idea of, of doing a total secret ballot no matter what. I think it gives us some security because as many of us have pointed out, when we're trying to figure out, you know, it's a moving target, trying to figure out if the date is really going to work. So theoretically, in July, we may be in a similar situation to we are now, to where we are now. And by simply moving forward and saying, we're going to take Bill's advice and move everything through the secret ballot to the manner which he prescribed. It gives us a safety net so that we're not trying to scramble at the last minute to figure out how to, how to move to town meeting into the, in secret ballot. I think we can, I think we can do that.
Right.
And then, as Allison pointed out, you know, there, there is question about the legality of, of unsolicited, sending unsolicited absentee ballots to all voters that haven't requested it. But it gives us time, we'll have some time between now and whenever that may, may be to figure that out. I'm in favor of, of moving forward with an all-secret ballot town meeting.
Mark?
I, I agree. I think we're talking about two things here. I think the secret ballot is the only way to go at this point. Because if you look at the science of what's been happening, the chances of having an open public meeting, you know, are slim and none, you know. And one of the things we talked about, the budget meeting, the, the one thing about having a secret ballot for the budget for the first time is that it'll, it'll allow more people to vote on it than we've ever had before. Give everybody in the town a chance to vote on it, which, which will be an interesting, interesting thing to see.
Yeah, I've been talking about a for, a formalization of the agreement of the Select Board to move forward with a, what I'm hearing is everybody's agreement on, on doing this approach.
Well, what I was going to say is, we're deciding two things. We're deciding on a secret ballot, and separately, we're deciding on the date of the secret ballot.
Yeah, and I've been.
Right now, we move ahead with this vote for the secret ballot, and then do the budget, and then decide on the date.
Well, we don't, we don't have to decide on the date today, if we.
Oh, I, I understand that.
Understanding as an option. So let's start with just approving the six. Again?
Allison has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Allison.
The only thing that will be difficult for me is that if the, if the governor comes out with an executive order that says that towns can do virtual open floor town meetings or something of that nature, then if Bill, I've seen Bill shaking his head, if he thinks that's like not even on the table, then.
Yeah, I think that that's very unlikely. I think that I'm, what MMA is, is suggesting is sort of what we've been doing, except even more narrow in the sense that they're suggesting that the governor might allow for all absentee balloting and no actual open polling. We were going to do absentee balloting and also have a poll open. So that's, that's clearly moving even further away from some type of communal Zoom. I don't know how you have that with the way people would make motions and a moderator trying to moderate it. So, oh, I'm, I'm reading tea leaves, but I'm just suggesting that the order that's going to come out from the governor is not going to have virtual open town meeting.
I, I agree with Bill. That's nothing that's been lobbied for at all. And then Governor's Office is exclusively listening to MMA, and their position hasn't, hasn't been virtual town meetings. It's been, you know, all-secret ballot and, and stuff like that.
No, somebody needs to, I don't know. It's, there's, there are plenty of ways to accomplish it, but that's fine. We're dealing with reality now. So I'm also confused about why we don't need to make a decision about the date today because it seems like we are being, the whole reason that we're having this meeting on Saturday morning is because we're trying to meet a printing deadline. And so I, I thought this was some kind of emergency situation where we really need it. If we're going to go ahead with June, we had to decide today, and that's why we're doing this. So what?
I think we should make that. I think we should make that vote today. That's, I think Allison's right. That's one of the major reasons we're having a Saturday meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with trying to make the vote today, but I think it's why, I think it does make sense to, I think Mark and Allison both said this. Like, let's dive into the budget, see if we can get it accomplished, and then that will help us. That will help us decision whether or not we want to nail down a date today.
Let's, let's, let's take one small step first. We've got to get a motion to accept the, the concept of doing the combined, what term to use, Bill, may help me here, the secret ballot that combines the town open town meeting issues as well as the budget all combined in one.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we combine the town meeting with the secret ballot, so it's all a secret ballot.
Check them.
All right, any discussion about that? I and A, Taylor?
Bill has something, I think, Bob.
I'm sorry, Bill.
I just want to, just what, the minutes will reflect that you will make this motion in the form of an order, which is what the statute requires, that you're putting all of the warrant articles on the secret ballot, and you're ordering that. Just, just a housekeeping point.
Good one, good one. There's a big difference.
Yeah, important. Thank you, Bill.
Well, Mark, that, you accept that amendment to your motion?
Yes, I amend in, in the manner that Bill spoke of.
In Jenna's second. Okay, to that order, then, Taylor, I or A? Mark?
I.
Jenna?
I.
Allison?
I.
Bob, I also five zero. So that's one, two. Do we want to discuss now or wait a little bit and talk about June 9th, July 14th, or December 31st?
I would suggest we, we'd go over the budget first. I think that's what Allison and I discussed. Let's do the budget, see how we end up with that, and then.
No, no problem. We'll, we'll, for the moment, table that discussion. And just don't let me forget at the end when I'm falling asleep. Just kidding. So we'll go on to the second item, which is will the Select Board discussion on approval of the FY21. To, just to lead off on that, Jody, you have to help me with numbers a little bit, just to make sure I get it right. But what we received from the Budget Committee is a, is a budget that reflects about, I'm talking the big picture, I talked about it, is it about a 2% decrease from last year's budget total?
So the, the, the gross general fund budget would be minus 2.7%. The net would be minus 2.1%.
And when you say that, that includes?
That includes the revenues that they appropriated.
But of course, it excludes the three other factors, which is county, midco solid waste, and the school.
That's correct.
Okay, good. So that's, that's where we're, where we're, the, the data point. And many thanks to the Budget Committee for all their hard work through this rather difficult time. It was not an easy task, given the perturbations in the middle of it, but they did a great job. And then also, just upfront on a, on a global discussion item, to me, what was they and we will be talking about an item, which is the Undesignated Fund Balance, which is, I just want to have a brief discussion with everybody on the same page about where that is, Jody, today. As of, because we're discussing a number of arenas, and we will be addressing it. The $4.7 million that we had as of June 30, 2019, of course, has changed. We had, we had designated about $950,000 of use of that $4.7 million for our current budget here. Of the $950, approximately, $600 and something thousand dollars was a town loan for, for, or designated as a loan to the town to fund projects, which the town would pay back to the surplus over years. We have an idea of where we are today with the Undesignated Fund Balance because I know we haven't executed a lot of those projects, et cetera, et cetera.
What I can tell you is, so you are correct, $4.7 million on assigned balance at, at June 30, 2019, we have, for FY20, we voted to use $985,000 of, on the side fund balance. Of that, $650,000 is a loan that we'll be paying back. So that gives us a number of $3.7 million left in unassigned fund balance. If, and I, I struggled with trying to do a, an estimation of what our unassigned fund balance would be at the end of June. This is the time where our departments want to get all their purchases in, and some may not. So I, I don't want to give out numbers that I'm going to regret later. So I'm thinking safely, probably two to three hun, and I'm being very conservative when I say $2 to $300,000 could be added to the unassigned fund, fund balance. It could be more than that. That's where it's just such a gray area right now.
Yeah, between now and, on top of that $3.7 million, two to $300,000 may be added by June?
Yes.
Okay.
Once we close the books.
And, and, and again, and, and, and by the way, none of this takes into account the currently $750,000 is in the Budget Committee's use of that investment fund. Just to put it in perspective, if, if we apply the town policy of 16.7% for reserve of that amount of monies on budget, you're probably talking $2 million.
So, once again, the, the unassigned fund balance policy is extremely vague. And I've, I've done all the scenarios that I can safely come up with. It says that the unreserved general fund shall be approximately 16.7% of the amount of the town's annual budget. It doesn't say, it, it doesn't say net budget. It doesn't say municipal only. It doesn't say entire budget. So based on what we have in unassigned fund balance right now, if it were the gross municipal budget, we would have 16%, 16.7% of that would be 1.5 million that we would need to have. If we were talking the gross budget, we would need about 3.9 million on assigned fund balance.
That's.
If, if we did the net budget, the net municipal budget, again, because it's not clearly stated, 16.7% of the net municipal budget would be about $1 million and 3.3 million for the net entire budget.
That's a great summary. I just, I was just saying, I just want everybody on the Select Board to be on the same page in understanding the, the elements of that very key account because we're going to be discussing it when we get into the budget in detail. Allison?
Um, you know, this is. You know, this is, this is always a topic of conversation. It's good to remember that this isn't one of the items that's in our charter. Or anything like that. It's a select word policy, a snapshot of a moment in time. That made sense then and there. Um, probably none of us were a part of those discussions, so. We should probably be focusing more on um, what it should, what that policy should be and how it should be interpreted. Then on. How it has historically been interpreted, because I've seen it used. You know, I think we, maybe we all do it, or it, there's a tendency to. Argue that point differently, like among municipal officials. I've, see, I've seen them interpret it differently. It seems like based on what is trying to be accomplished at the, at the time. Um, so. In terms of, you know, if you want to make an argument to give three million dollars back to, or two million dollars back to taxpayers, you can say sixteen more than seven percent. It's just the town budget, it's just municipal budget and blah, blah, blah. Um, but I guess in the absence of. We haven't had a meeting to discuss exactly what the policy should be. At the auditor. Although I don't always agree with everything, he did say that the practice is to consider the schools. As well, to consider our whole, um, our entire obligation, because the s- the schools don't actually. Maintain the, the same types of undesigned fund balances that we do. Um, so they're not. Keeping, it's my understanding that they're not keeping their own sixteen point seven percent as a rainy day fund. And if everything went poorly, um, and they didn't have any money, we, it is, it is the town that. Kind of has to back them up, I think. So anyway, I think we should just consider now until we can decide more, we should probably interpret it as. Then the net total budget, the total obligation of the town.
Yeah, I would just agree uh with your comment about the school board, because as my understanding, the school board has the ability to borrow one. What is it, George? One percent of the town total assessment?
But then we still have to pay what they borrow.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying, it's a, um, you have to pay the interest in what they borrow and, but they're still, they're, they're funding. Their, their, their day-to-day operation, not by the town, they're funding it via loan.
But a loan that the town's going to have to pay back. They have, they can assess the town for the payment on their loan.
The bottom line of is, and we, you're right, we're not going to reassess the policy today. I just wanted to put in, in character or, or. In a box of some of the elements that we have to play with here when we get to talking about utilizing how much or of the uh. Of the fund balance you want to put into the budget. But again, back to um, the um, overall view, we are. As I said, or, or you said, we're two something percent less than last year. Um. I just wanted to suggest, um, if really, excuse me, sorry, if there are any. Budget overall macroscopic issues, we wanted to talk first, if there are any, we can, we can go that route. And then we can go through, um, you know, the various departments or comments by the select board, as any issue they want to individually look at. Does that make sense? Mark?
I'll, I'll start. Um, my biggest concern, um, very happy with what the work the Budget Committee did. With the exception of the final decision to eliminate COLA from employees for the year. And I've been thinking about it a lot. Uh, we've gotten memos and letters about it and uh. I wanted to, to give my perspective on it. Um, going back to when I was in, in business and major corporation. Uh, I worked uh fifteen years at a company where we had sort of two people. In charge of the day-to-day operations. We had the executive vice president, we had a treasurer. The treasurer, you know, looked at things, you know, how many computers do we have? How many desks do we have? How many um, chairs, you know, office chairs we have? The executor, the executive vice president um, looked at it in terms of the people. And he said, and his, his comment was, um, you know, we can have some beat-up chairs. We can have some computers that maybe aren't the top of the line, but as long as our people are top of the line, we take care of the people. They will get the job done. If you have great computers and great desks and you don't have great people. It, it won't make any difference. It's the people that make the difference. We're in a circumstance now where. I, I, and I had this conversation with Audrey yesterday. He said, I would rather find a way to take care of the people and eliminate some stuff. Because stuff isn't going to change, particularly, um, you know, I thought about the, the town employees and we don't know their circumstances. And I don't want to know their circumstances. I know most families are two-income families these days. We don't know the circumstances of the other people, um, the partners of, of all our town employees and what conditions they're going under. And uh, they're, they're having this difficult time, you know, so I would rather not take it away. One thing I asked Audrey was, where could we go to make a change? And she said, to bring the budget back, to bring some of that money back. And she said, the one thing that made sense, um, quickest would be the police cruiser. Now, I know that the department needs it. The, the last car, the car they're using now is, I think, four or five years running. But in the wisdom of the, the Budget Committee, they did give us um, some funds to work on emergencies. If we didn't buy the cruiser now, reestablish the COLA, which would bring us pretty close to where we were before. And um, at some point in the future, you know, during the year, if. You know, something happened to that cruiser and we had to make an emergency buy, we would have the funds for that. But right now, I think taking care of people more than getting things is more, is more important to me.
If I may, this is Jenna. Um, can I jump in for a second? I have been very conflicted with this um, as well, and I find myself. Erring on the same page as Mark. Um, in this case, I feel like we don't know. What people are facing. We are all strug- I mean, everyone is struggling across the board. Um, it's. It's a relatively manageable number and I feel like it's a huge, um, like Mark said, taking care of people. Is hugely important thing right now. And if it's, it's something that we can do and we can do. Manageably without just blowing the budget, that I think that precedent has been set in times of recession. For example, two thousand eight and two thousand nine, we didn't eliminate this. Um, I think it, I personally have given a lot of thought to this and, and a lot of trepidation, but I would support um, the COLA.
Um, one other point I want to make about it that I, I missed. Um, if we buy a vehicle. The money leaves Camden, leaves the area. If we support our people, the money stays local. And I think that's important as well.
Taylor, you had your hand.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with Mark. Um, the. You know, I think that, um, I watched the, the, I wasn't at the Budget Committee meeting on Thursday night, but I watched it all yesterday and um. Uh, and I really appreciate all the work that they put in and you could tell that they, um, you know, it was quite twenty, thirty minute discussion about the COLA. Uh, and you could tell some people were struggling with it, even though only one person voted no, um, at the end of the day. Um. I think that the, that philo- it seemed like it was more of a philosophical discussion to remove the COLA than anything else, which, which. Next to me is odd. Um, the, you know, that in, in these uncertain times, it didn't feel appropriate to give employees COLA. I take a totally different view. I think in these times, this is exactly when we should be supporting our employees, particularly essential employees. Public works, essential infrastructure employees, fire department, non-union employees that wouldn't be receiving a COLA otherwise. We did get a couple of notes from, from town staff. I'm, I'm not going to read both of them, but there were some interesting points that they made about. How second grade increases work. I know that during the Budget Committee meeting, some people made the point that. Employees still get their second grade increases, so they, they still have that, even if we do remove the COLA, but that's not true. Um, for employees that have been here for twenty plus years, because they've already maxed, they're already at top step. So, um, fourteen employees, um, who are our most loyal, most seasoned, most experienced employees. Um, only ever see COLA, um, when that comes in as a raise. Um, and to me, you know, I think that. It's difficult to try to compare our municipal employees, many of whom are essential, all really are essential if you think about support staff. Um, and all of their functions, um, to the private sector. Um, I, I don't think it's, it's really. A smart way to do it. You know, I think that, that we have to look at our employees as essential and um, to me. Um, it's important that we support our employees as much as possible and they need to know that they're important to us in these times. And um, yeah, to me, they, just any conversation about reducing COLA, particularly from a philosophical standpoint. Um, I would not support. I think it needs to stay in there.
Ms. Allison?
Yeah, um, I have, I have a totally different perspective on this. Um. To, to begin with, even if we were going to get rid of the coronavirus um, considerations. And just start with the three percent number that was proposed. This is not consistent with past town policy. I know for the past. Year or so, that's, we, we tied it to the police union contract. But this isn't the way the conversation goes in any other organization. It's the cost of living increase would typically be tied to something that is real, like the Consumer Price Index. And so in the other Budget Committee discussions that I've had over the past years and looking back over old articles and reports. That's where the, the conversation centers around is what should we base, uh, you know, on what should we base? The cost of living increase. And that is, has, we've looked at, um, what is, what are they doing for state employees? What is the projected um, soc- social security um. Cost of living increase. Those three percent is wildly out of sync with any real. Number out there. Um, the only number that it corresponds with is the negotiated number for the police department. The police department. Does have some things that um. Or town employees do have some benefits that the police department doesn't have. I believe the police department. Contributes more, a little bit more to their health insurance. Um, for town employees that have been here for over twenty years. And no longer get the step increases. Some of them. Do still have the ability to be reclassified when they've been promoted or their job description has changed and that has happened some in the past. And they do, anybody that was hired prior to two thousand and seven has health benefits that are. Among the most enviable out there. Anybody that was hired after two thousand and seven, and I believe that includes, um. I think does the police union contract, I don't think that, does that distinguish between before and after two thousand and seven or is that all a? It does. So, but anybody that isn't getting these, these step increases. It's because they've been here for twenty years at least, and that means that they have a hundred percent. Health insurance for their, for, for their whole family too. That, that is a, a benefit that, that. My family and most others can only dream of. Um, I reached out to um, Maria Libby. Yesterday to ask what the school was considering. Um, school admin, the, the entire administrative staff. For the past two years has voluntarily uh, offset their performance increases by um, furlough days. So their salaries are staying completely flat, um, for a, a variety of reasons. Maria also said she was leaning strongly towards um, a, a, a zero percent um, COLA. Looking around the state at what's happening, healthcare workers are seeing, they're, are seeing pay cuts. Many, many employees all over the place that are. That are, that are essential, that are going to work. They are seeing pay cuts. They're seeing, they're seeing reduced hours. They're. I, I just can't imagine at this time that saying one year without. A raise. Is, is so problematic. So I, I respect the differences and I may be in the minority on this. But um, and I, I, I really think we have some of the greatest town employees ever, which is why we've backed off. Always on reducing health benefits. Um, I've always supported salary increases and reclassifications. And paying very competitive salaries and, and we do that. I think our town employees are really well taken care of. But on this particular issue, I, I can't support a whole increase.
Mark?
Jody, I have a question. On an average salary, what's, what's, what does three percent bring into a paycheck? An average town salary.
Well, while she's looking for that, Mark.
And while she's saying that, while she's looking that up, my comment is, and, and this is. I've brought this up in previous uh, budget discussions with select board. It's, we don't want to be in a race to the bottom, just because other people are doing, well, they're cutting here and cutting there and cutting there. I just don't think we have to join that stampede as a race to the bottom. And because right now, like I said, I'm willing to cut the budget in other places to take care of the people instead of stuff. Um, because I think it's more important to take care of the people, because that money will come back into the community. And I think it's important and it's the reason we have such great employees and we have such a great town is because we have that backbone.
Taylor?
Yeah, I, again, I agree with Mark. I was just thinking the same thing, you know, I, I, I appreciate and respect what Allison is saying. But I don't, I don't think just because we can, we can compa- we can compare. Ourselves to what's happening in other places means that we should. Um, you know, on, on the same token, on the other side of that, if you go just down the street to our friends in Rockland. Audrey, I think can probably come wrong, but I think the majority of their employees are union shops. So I wouldn't bet that all of those people are getting a COLA this year. You know, so there's another side of that argument as well.
I'm totally in favor of hazard pay, by the way. Um.
I was going to get to that one.
You know, we can, we can do that in a way that really does reward, you know, some, some of our employees are not in. Quite as difficult a situation as others in terms of having to interface with, with the public or having their jobs changed to be. You know, significantly riskier. So for um, non-union employees who fall under our personnel policy. And who are at an elevated risk, I would love to take that seventy six thousand dollars. Um, from the COLA and that we would save from the COLA and reapply that to a hazard pay. Stipend for, you know, non-union employees for whom it makes sense.
I think, I think that's a great, thanks. That was a great segue into um, one of the top processes. Isn't, yeah, this is difficult when I get that and I know the Budget Committee had, even though it may have been as a majority vote, a vast majority vote. They were struggling with it too, but during that, during that um, meeting, a, a person or two had brought up the hazardous duty pay kind of thing. Because it's, the way I think of it is the following, one. Our people are currently, for April, May and June in this fiscal year, many of them, most of them are working. And, and having to work, go to work, um, not just fire, public works is a long list. Then in my mind, I, I said, well, how long into the next fiscal year will that go? And I, it's X months, we could debate how many months it is. I don't think it's the whole fiscal year, God, but I hope not. But I think that COLAs are, you know, they're usually related to a, it's a cost of living increase. That's what, that's what it's defined as. I think it, what helped me to think of this was to craft it as a. We're in, we're in a different situation and then, I know semantics counts to everyone's point about not being philosophical. I, I, I have no problem turning to the public and saying, look, they're, they're one Herculean, getting the job done, they're still going to work. This, this is not a classified as a COLA, in my mind, hazardous duty paid, whatever it is. I, I do believe it's a little difficult to separate who is vulnerable or not. I believe you got to do a hundred percent or zero. That you just, you just can't say, um, Joe or Sally is, you know, but don't go there. Um, this is not a budget breaker. Um, and I also agree with comments I hear about when you're running an organization, you should be making the best decision for that organization. In my life, there are numerous recessions that have gone on, terrible times, did not affect my company because of niches we were in. We still went ahead with, you know, increases because we wanted to keep our key people and keep them well motivated to, to, to stay around. There's a lot of fact, but I, how you classify it or how you, whatever you call it. The dollars here are not substantial. I think the total Joey said was about seventy five or seventy six thousand dollars for the total three percent. Which obviously excludes the police union because that's, that's, we can't touch that. I, I know it's a complicated one, but I think, you know, I lean towards crafting something that says we're increasing pay across the board. For our employees who, it's one of my problems, uh, I'm too analytical, is I, I don't have. A total benefits to Allison's point is true. A hundred percent benefits is a wonderful thing to have. It's very rare. With the, there's a value to that. And then the salaries and compare these individuals to industry. I, I don't have that and I'm not sure the town has that. And so without failing that, um, some form, whatever you want to call it, of increase needs to be in the budget.
One, one more question. Audra, Taylor brought it up. What happens if, you know, right now? We have a very happy staff. They're not union with the exception of, of the police department. What, what, what's your experience with dealing with unions in, in Rockland where they're, it's, it's a much more union shop?
Just to be frank, it's, it's a real, it was a real relief coming here where you can deal directly with the employees. You know, like if you want to reward someone because they're doing a good job, I have that latitude. You don't have that when you're dealing with a union shop. You like, you know, sometimes if you want to do something. To recognize someone, reward somebody who's a good performer, make some changes. It's just impossible if you have a unionized department that you're working with. So it's just been really refreshing to have that sort of flexibility, that, that. Ability to sort of deal with, um, you know, departments sort of. You know, I've, I've been able to go into public works and get their opinion and talk with them about what they want to do in past years. And that's just been. It's just been really nice. Um, and I would miss having that flexibility if, you know, if we ever get to a situation where things change.
And, and Jody, did you come up with a number yet?
Yeah, I came up with. Expecting a three percent increase every year. Is this what we're doing for the future that every year the employees, because when there was a huge amount of push to. From the town to reduce health insurance benefits to be more in line with the vast majority of municipalities. There was this same concern about we are fearful, maybe they'll, they'll unionize. And so. They gave up the COLA and benefits were the same. And now we're at a three percent COLA. That has to be kept or maybe they will unionize. And so now is that the new? Thing that every year there's a, there's a, okay, it's going to be a three percent year of raise every year forever or. Or they unionize? Is this, what? That, that attitude is disappointing to me, given the fact that. My family is facing pay cuts. I can't even imagine demanding a raise right now. It's just.
Like, from my perspective, a good question, Allison, to my perspective, I, I look at it fresh. Firstly, I will continue as long as I'm around. Uh, on the select board and with the town. I would look at it independently every year to see what circumstances make sense and when. That's why this year I don't believe that a COLA is justified. I believe it's a different situation. It's a special circumstances raise.
Social Security is looking at point eight percent as, as like a top level possibility.
And, and I have to say, uh, the biggest check I get every month is some social security. I, you know, but I don't, you know, I understand that. I, I live, you know, in difficult situation, you know, every year. But, um, you know, we have the ability to do good things and I want to do that. Um, Jody, you were going to talk about.
I did a quick, um, quick number here. It's, the average is about fifty two thousand dollars for our employees. Three percent would be about fifteen hundred and sixty dollars.
A year. And after taxes and such, what would that mean to a paycheck? Sorry.
You're probably talking about, uh, take home of about twelve hundred.
It'd be a lot more fair to give a flat number to people rather than.
Talking.
The biggest increases to the people who already make the most. I mean.
She's talking about a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars a month.
Janice, Janice.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know, we had a budget committee, um, comment. I don't know if you want to hear it or not.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's from Carla and I won't pronounce her name right. Domineus Tranfield. She says, what is the budget impact of allowing a three percent COLA only for those who are not getting a step increase?
I don't know.
Otherwise, who's not getting a step increase? That COLA, what would the cost?
I don't know.
That's interesting.
Well, I think the step increase is, is a policy that the town has for a person's longevity. My mind, that's different from an increase across the board for.
And your step increases are every three years to your max.
Yeah, yeah. All good points. Um, we need to, uh, we need to call this onto a decision here, people. Do I get a motion for, uh, to start the discussion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, restore COLA to the, the budget.
Second.
Are you attaching a percentage to that, Mark?
Pardon me, Taylor?
You're attaching it. Is that a three percent mark?
Yes, the, the three percent was.
And getting you clear on that?
Yes, good clarification, Taylor. I second that motion at three percent.
Discussion. We can, um, I would prefer that this not be referred to as a COLA, prefer to be a special circumstances increase, uh, because of. And by the way, that, I'm just saying it because to Allison's point, I agree. I'm not approving a three percent increase every year. If the cost of living goes crazy, um, it could be more. If the cost of living goes where it might go in a recessionary period. It won't be three percent. It won't be anything.
I would agree with that.
I reserve the right to, uh, and I think the town should be, again, I may not be, I don't know, but I think you are. Evaluated every single year. And I think it should be a special situation increase, not a COLA.
I'll amend to have that called special circumstance increase.
And I will amend my second.
Discussion.
Then why, then why would it be a percentage and, and not a, a flat, you know, everybody, every American's getting. Twelve hundred dollars plus or might, or plus a bunch of young kids. Then you've got six, the six hundred dollar add-on for unemployment. If it's, why is it a, why is it a, why would we do it as a percentage? It just, it, it feels like escaping the issue. With semantics and how does that go in our accounting system? Special circumstances increase is called this year.
I don't believe it does affect accounting. It, it's just an approval of an amount of money just being paid to each individual, which goes into each individual's payroll. The payroll will be up for Ms. X will be, uh, you know.
No, fine. But when you look back, when you have future budget committees and select boards, looking back to say, what is the history of? COLA in the town of Camden? Is it gonna, or is there going to be a zero percent this year? And then, but some other thing that's a three percent special?
No.
Why don't I, I'd like to amend the motion to say, uh, COLA, uh, in as. You keep COLA in the description and also in this year of special circumstances.
I, I, and Allison, very good point. I think, Allison, to your point, I think the, the consideration of a COLA every year should be, should be contingent on the actual consumer price index. I, I don't even know what the consumer price index has been gyrating all over the place right now. So it needs to be pegged to something. I don't think it should ever be. We did three percent for the last three years, so it should be three percent this year. I don't agree with that. Uh, I think it has to be a moving target. We don't know what tomorrow's going to bring literally today and we won't next year either.
We already have an extra a hundred thousand dollars in the budget from the budget committee for select word contingency that could be applied to some kind of hazardous stipend or.
Well.
Does this affect all, all, every single, even the part-time employees and?
Yep. We, um, understood and we have a motion in a second. I'm going to move to a vote, uh, to get a. Yay or nay on this issue, starting with Mark.
I.
Taylor.
I.
I.
Allison.
Nay, but I'm not sure what exactly the, the motion is going to read as. So. Is it going to say Allison was opposed to hazardous duty pay or is it going to, or special circumstances pay or?
That's why, Mark, I think, I think, yeah, that's a good question. Mark, let me retract, but let's clarify for Allison's question.
I amended to a COLA in, in a year of special circumstances.
Okay, so we're, next, nay, still.
Okay, and Bob's always, uh, so four to one, let's, let's move on with, um, the, the budget discussion. In terms of the, um. Probably, I guess now unless there's any, is there any of the macroscopic thing like the COLA that we want to attack?
Well.
We get into some of the weeds.
Yes, the second part of the, the conversation, and I don't know if, um, Audra had a conversation with our chief or not, chief of police about, um, if he could. Get by without the cruiser so we could really take back some of those funds.
I didn't have a chance to speak with Randy about cruiser.
I think we can look, first of all, we just added about seventy five thousand dollars to.
Exactly.
I believe, um, there, there are many ways of finding that, Mark. We can keep them on the table. One could be a cruiser. There are some others we could look at, we could relook at contingency, we could relook at, um. The surplus we've been using or not. But let's, I'd suggest what we do now is keep that on the table. Because I think our overall objective would be to, uh, again, this is the, the thirty thousand foot view to keep the budget. Less, less than, um, what the budget was for FY twenty, the previous.
No problem.
Right? I'm not saying yay or nay on the, on the, on the car, but maybe, um, the most efficient way is just scan through. Each department quickly and, and ask if any of the select board members have any comment on those major departments. Does that make sense?
Sure.
All right. So my first one is, um, the eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the general government. Admin and finance. Do we have anybody with any input there?
Well, if the, the COLA adjustment then would certainly.
Yes, it, it would have an increase there. There's no question. I'm, I'm beyond the salary, I'm going to put it this way, beyond the salary. Geez, I can't even speak. Beyond the salary line item, are there any other comments on any of the other line items in that budget? Not hearing any. Let's move on to. Uh, we, we can come back if we have to, but I'm just trying, I'm sorry, my computer's really slow here, but. Uh, next would be, um, professional services. Account, which is, uh, again, uh. Will be modestly impacted by. That, but I think most of it's, this is legal counsel and personnel legal. Is there any comments there?
Right, the, Audra, the reimbursement from Bell House for bill services and revenues, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question, Taylor. Um, planning code enforcement, community development and assessing. Again, other than salaries. All right, information technology. Uh, let's see, is, I don't, I had something in there. Where, where is the conference room improvements? That's in capital projects. Is that correct?
Yes, that was.
Okay, okay.
That was one of the.
But it wasn't cut from here.
You know, from the, the audio visual was cut from the, the, the.
Project.
Conference room and by the budget committee, and I agree with that as much as I'm fully a fan of the Opera House.
We haven't gotten there yet. On insurances, um, anything in insurances. Okay. Opera House Town Office Building. This is, again, wages. I, I didn't have appointments here. All right. Opera House Auditorium. Staff and maintenance. This is for the actual building itself. I didn't, I didn't have any questions here. All right, uh, Police Department. This is, it hasn't changed because there's no change in salary because it's, it's all calculated to one point three million dollars. Maybe.
I mean, it, it makes me a little uncomfortable that everything else is needing to go. Down and it's six point five percent is a pretty big. Increase here, but.
Any suggestions, Allison?
I'm not, I'm not in my normal frame of mind when it comes to cutting the police department budget.
Yeah.
I actually feel like. At a time, and I don't even know if I feel good about cutting the, the cruiser because at, at this time, we, we want the police department to be doing deliveries and. All kinds of stuff. So, um, I bet they're probably working more than ever, doing some different things, but. Having, you know, well, we'll talk about the cruiser when we get to that, but I, I guess, um, no, nothing jumps.
Okay, all right. Yeah, me too. I struggle with that one too. Uh, dispatch services, obviously we have no control over that one. Audra, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Fire and Rescue Department, excluding our fire expert in the corners up there in the picture. Just kidding. Do we have any comment on that budget, which is, will be affected by the COLA, of course, um, but I didn't have. It just seemed like a, a Philly, well, actually. Budget from previous years.
As, as Allison just said, this is a time when, uh, these people are working harder and under more stress than ever.
I agree. Thank you for me commenting. No, Allison.
Um, I, this is. Maybe not the, since we're talking about the fire department, it's maybe not the right time because it would technically be a revenue source, I guess, but. I, I do think we should work harder to sell, um, any surplus equipment. Like the fire truck that's being lent to Hope, for example, or, um. Any extra things, you know, we're looking for. Revenue sources and ways to, to cut, cut things and not people. And so if there are opportunities to sell equipment that, that we have, I think, um, we should be trying to do that.
And I think, um, Audra, I think you can comment on that because I know I've heard it from Chris, uh, about thoughts in that exact topic. Do you want to just?
Yeah, we were really close to being able to, um, sell a major piece of equipment before. Present circumstances sort of unfolded the way that they did. So. You know, I'm hopeful in the, in the year ahead of us, we might be able to, um, you know, sell one of our fire trucks.
Yeah, I understand those.
Or at least start advertising, just to have, have it advertised out there publicly somewhere, just to show that we're trying.
Yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
I think that's a good point, Allison. We have equipment and I know Chief Farley has agreed that. I think, I believe there was activity actually with her respective town to sell it, but this whole situation has kind of slowed that discussion down. I believe that engine is back in Camden's garage. I'm not sure.
We've got a few things of the wastewater treatment plant too, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Excellent point because it could be X thousands of, tens of thousands of dollars, not hundreds of thousands, probably where we could. Get some more revenue.
And plus we would lose the maintenance costs for the particular engine.
Good point.
There's other vehicles that we have that we've been holding on to for years and there's really, in my opinion, no good reason in you holding on to some of these.
Yeah.
I think in, in, in talking to chief, when we've been discussing, you know, at some point, maybe bringing in some, um, ambulance services into. The, uh, public safety building, that it, it wouldn't be a problem bringing, bringing an ambulance in because we have vehicles that we are not using.
And selling.
And, and I'm not even just talking fire department. We've got other departments that are holding on to things that we, we just really. Yeah, there's like a sentimental attachment to some of them and they could easily be old. I, I think it's a better business decision.
Like there's some stuff at the Snowball even that.
Yep.
I don't, I, that people love to look at and it's really wonderful, but even passing them along and selling them to somebody who will. To somebody who will, you know, restore them and. Take care of them might be. Might be better.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
I appreciate the marching orders, it'll make it.
Yep. I would a hundred percent support that, we've got all kinds of issues in all departments where we could play that going forward. Public Safety Building.
Bob, let me ask a question, do we want to motion to direct Audrey to sell excess equipment or is it just a directive?
Think she needs that.
I know, but let's let's also do it in a way that's like.
Okay, ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion that we direct the town manager to go through department to department to sell excess equipment that we are no longer in need of.
Second.
Can we just? Can we just, is that something, I don't want the motion to be interpreted as just like. Not not that she would do it willy nilly, but I think it's important for transparency purposes that anything that's. But that it's not just a town employee throwing something up on Facebook and seeing what they can get, that there's a there's a. Process that we end up approving it at the end, I mean, it might be the very worst time in the world to sell things, and if that's true for certain items, then we should be aware of of that, but.
Well, this is my plan, now that now that this is likely that you're going to vote in favor of doing this. What we're going to do, we'll go through each department and we'll take an inventory of excess equipment. And I'll bring that inventory to the select board and, you know, we can kind of explain everything and I'll tell you what. You know, sort of our policy is around. Purchasing and disposition of excess equipment, and then you can vote formally on, you know, moving forward with. Yeah, so that's.
That's that sounds great. And I think if there if. If there are vehicles, I do have two professional volunteers that would be happy to appraise them for at no charge for the town.
Yeah, and there's there's a lot of vehicles and ones that there'll be. Specifically perfect for somebody with that expertise.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
Want to clarify one thing to expound in what Allison said, we said excess equipment. That kind of presumes that it's just sitting there doing nothing, it's not true, it should really be, equipment is not being. Efficiently utilized, and and that's to Audrey's, you know, challenge is determine what is being used inefficiently, not just excess.
No, some of it truly is access that is just sitting there, that's just.
Yeah, let's let me let me amend the the most, say that why don't we authorize Audrey to do an inventory. Of all the departments and then come to the select board with a recommendation. On what what changes we could make for for equipment.
That okay with you, Jenna?
Yes, that's fine with me, thank you.
Then we'll move to. Yay or nay on that, Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
And Bob, I five zero, move on to the next budget item, which is the Public Safety Building. Not a heck of a lot in there, but. So let's move on. Hydrants assessment, I don't think we have much control with that one, Audrey.
No, unfortunately.
I'd like to just give it a shot, just try to negotiate, just say, sorry, we couldn't get it approved by voters, they wanted to pay less.
Good idea.
It's really quite ridiculous, and I was a little nervous that during some of the budget committee discussions, when we're talking about water and wastewater and people get their. Bills from the through the water company, I just. I wanted it to be clear that one of those, you know, the water company is a private corporation and. You know, we don't set those rates so that nobody gets the wrong idea.
Good point, good point. Let's see, none were to, streetlights, I don't think that's what we're talking about. Public Works Department. Then the, you know, the wages which will change modestly, it's almost one point two million dollars. I don't have any comments here. Not hearing any, we'll move on. To, well, basically, it's a continuation of of streets, highways, bridges, and the majority of that money is in. Street paving and that is so needed, and I see it being very efficiently used already. For this coming, this existing year, so I I don't have any comments on that one.
Audrey, would you mind just, I may talk about this before kind of restating what the plan for this year on the street paving is?
Oh, I I was afraid somebody would ask that question, I don't remember, if I could get back to you with a list, that would be much appreciated.
Yes, that's a good idea, a good question, though, Taylor.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's it is a good question, I should have been.
Because it can be a moving target, next chunk was, let's see. Parking lots of seventy thousand, we don't have much choice there yet, so leases, I recall. Well, no, it's a purchase, blah, 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 this is this is the parking lot at at Nolton.
Yeah, Nolton and Knoxville, and just to remind everyone, there's an offsetting revenue for that because.
Tree program, tree maintenance and shade tree planting, every year.
Awesome, another question.
Yeah, go ahead, Allison.
Um, I've gotten a lot of comments from people concerned that the. Town is not planning well for the next generation of trees, we're cutting down more street trees than we're. Planting, there's a lot of maintenance that. That needs to happen all over the place and some of, you know, a limited amount of brown tail moth. Mitigation and, you know, proactive pruning might be part of that, so. If it were me, I would want to bump up the maintenance. Hold on, which one of those lines is used to take trees down?
Tree maintenance, I would assume.
Yes.
Hmm, this is what we've.
The description says removal.
I know, and I think we wanted it, but. In the past, we've, what?
It's it's pruning as well as removal.
Right, but there's, in trying to send a message to do maintenance and not removal. I, whatever, I guess I would, I would. Ask that we increase the shade tree planting budget to. Five thousand. Or I don't know, is this where we would have any kind of thing with the, with the. Brown tail moth or, it feels like there's a lot going on with trees.
You have a separate line for the Emerald Dash board somewhere?
No, no, first of all, but if I'm, Audrey, correct us, the tree maintenance line, I would think would be the one that would be doing any special work to. Maintain trees to take down cocoons or whatever we're doing brown tail moth. Allison to shade tree planting, that would be planting more trees, I presume.
I understand that, Bob, obviously, but I'm not wanting to increase the budget that is also used just for. Taking down trees, because sometimes the budget is a communication document as well, and.
So I think Allison could achieve that end, maybe putting additional funds in the tree conservation reserve.
Oh, right.
We currently have fifteen thousand in the tree conservation, just so you know.
That's to date, right?
Yes.
Any plan to use that for anything?
Well, we do, um, the brown tail moth remediation in. Barrett's Cove, Lake Beach and Mountain View Cemetery that we're going to need to talk about.
Yeah.
So I would. Yeah, okay, then when we get to that.
Okay, good.
Section, we can.
Good, good. Provider agencies and community services. Okay.
Actually, you know what, can we still go back and I, I would move that we double the tree plant, shade tree planting budget to four thousand.
Okay, are you making? Did you make a motion on?
I did, I did make.
I'll second the motion.
Mark seconded any discussion. Okay, we move for vote to Taylor.
All right.
Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
To change shade tree planning from two thousand up to four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Allison, for bringing that up.
Yep.
Leonard was like whispering in my ear, I think, with a grumpy tone, better yours than mine.
To the Camden Public Library, that's. Fixed. Culture and Recreation. Harbor, Cultural Recreation Harbor, with salaries, boats. Et cetera, I'm just, I had a comment, I guess it's not in here, no, I don't have any comment here. Co- culture Recreation Recreation Department, which is basically.
All right, Bob, I was muted, I have a question about the harbor.
Okay, go ahead.
The pump out boat operations in eighteen, budget was twenty thousand, we used sixteen actuals. In nineteen, it was twenty five thousand, we used eighteen actuals. I, you know, I wonder, we've kind of been planning for a not as busy harbor, which I think is reasonable, I just wonder if. Steve not here to answer, but I wonder what people think about taking five thousand out of the pump out boat.
Isn't that awesome, revenue, Audrey?
Yes, so ninety percent of the cost of the pump out boat is paid for by state grant.
Okay, disregard them.
Good question, because your answer to your concern about the harbor is yes. Then we're on to to Culture Recreation, I call the Parks Department, which calls the Recreation Department. What does we have in here for? I've always felt, Audrey, is this grounds maintenance for maintaining parks?
So I guess the best way to look at this, the recreation budget, is that is the snowball in the summer.
Oh, thank you.
That's very clear.
Yes, snowball in the summer, and that includes the the summer rec program.
Oh, I see. I see.
This staff is funded fifty percent through the town and fifty percent through the snowball.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have about it is is Lake Stewart is on there for fifty seven hundred, we've been talking about. Is that the line that will change if we?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's the one.
And I mean, and at some point, we would name it to, name it as inland harbor master.
Right.
My thought is we, you know, we leave it the same, and if we have to make a change this year, it comes out of our contingency.
Yeah, we're still on a discussion perspective there, then on to Culture and Recreation now, Parks. And my question in here was, Audrey, how much are we putting aside for maintaining the parks, looking for that line?
So that's kind of, that's one of the things that was recommended to be cut, so originally it was twenty five thousand and now it's five thousand.
Which which line is that, Audrey, I'm missing it.
That's in a reserve account.
Well, I'm just, in my my candid opinion, our our parks are behind in maintenance, they have a lot of things to. To pay attention to, we've not done enough on the parks, and I have a little heartburn with reducing the maintenance line item. For the maintenance of our parks, there's, it, Lake, not Lake Beach, you know that too, but. There are issues with stairs, there are issues with erosion, shirttail, et cetera, they all need attention, and it's going to be a lot more than that dollars, in my opinion, but.
And I I think, you know, one of the things that's sort of. Holding us back from any sort of comprehensive, you know.
Plan.
Or redevelopment is just not not having planning done. You know, and that's one thing I'd I'd really recommend the select board. You know, speak to the Parks Committee about coming up with, you know, long term plans for, you know, some of our parks, I know there's a lot of interest in. You know, developing the tannery as a park, but I really strongly feel that we've got to, you know, we've got to come up with better long term plans for the parks that we already have. And that's the main focus.
I couldn't agree more, as, one second, Allison, as liaison to the Parks Committee, I'd like to have some. The Select Board, and I'm happy to convey the message that its entire priority at this point in time, ninety percent, should be on their. Identified shortcomings on the parks, which are about twenty of them, or whatever it is, and pay a lot more attention to get that planned, budgeted and executed.
With drinking water fountains for all.
I agree, I agree, all the above, Allison, and I think we've been a little slow collectively for lots of reasons, and some of them very good. About not doing some of these things and getting executed, and 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 I would, I would have to, with the Select Board's. Approval, I I want to put a lot of pressure on Parks and Rec to focus on that element of their work on a monthly basis, as they as they reconvene at some point in time. You all, you all agree with that?
I I appreciate that, I've been, you know, speaking about the Ragged Mountain area for quite a while, there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done there and upkeep. But thank you for directing us in that direction.
What a problem at all, good, good point. But to the back to the maintenance item, and I don't want to jump ahead, but you said we have in reserve, how much, how much was cut?
Well, Jody can tell you what's what currently exists in that reserve account, but, you know, this year, originally, we had budgeted twenty five thousand for the Parks and Open Space Reserve. But twenty thousand was cut from that, so it's it's at five thousand.
I think that needs to be put back completely, to, I don't know what the reserve balance to date is, Jody.
The Parks and Open Space Reserve is at seventeen thousand three hundred.
The date, that's all we have?
That's not very much.
No, I would, I would, I would suggest the board move on on bringing it back to twenty five thousand.
We, then, why don't we find a compromise, bring it up, bring it to like twenty or something, let's not.
And you might want to wait until you get to that portion of budget, Allison.
Excellent point, thank you, Audrey.
Um, can I ask a couple of questions about what you guys were talking about before?
Yeah.
Um. Oh, just very quickly, are there, did the swing set ever get installed at Lake Beach?
I don't know if it was.
No, I I think because of the. I believe that, oh boy, I believe they did the pad for it, you know, the required pad. But I don't believe it was ever installed because we got into a weather situation last year where they didn't want to have it up, I don't, I don't, I believe the answer is no.
I mean, if there's, if there's one thing I will accomplish before I get off of the select word is, it is restoring swings to Lake Beach, this has been the just. Unsolvable problem, I I don't understand it, it's, we.
I'm on the same page as you.
We, it was so exciting when we finally voted on. Purchasing the swing set and the. Just put it right back where it was before, I mean, I know, I'm sure there's a reason, and I probably sound really insensitive right now to a hardworking town employee that has. But, um. Also, it would be. Interesting to try to, it was with so many people. Out of work and contrary to the belief of some, most of these people. A lot of them at least are are self-employed and not receipt, not just sitting home collecting unemployment benefits. There are are many people who are now underemployed and Camden residents are struggling. It would be interesting to try to do what, something like what's been done in the past, like, and I'm talking like, almost a hundred years ago. With what, you know, what Mrs. Bach used to do, where she would hire. Lots of struggling Camden residents to do big trail projects and maintenance projects and grounds cheaping projects, and we could actually use. Trust fund money to do some of that if we did it in the right way, and I think maybe some some work on our. Parks could be a be an outside thing, it might be a good opportunity to. Put some people to work doing something positive.
Interesting point, kind of Works Project Administration from.
Exactly.
Got it.
Allison, I have an answer to your swing set question.
Oh.
So by the, by the time, like, it's all, it's all ready to be installed, the ground, the, you know, the the groundwork to install the swing set has all been done. By the time we got the actual equipment, the ground was frozen, so they couldn't install it. By the time we got the actual equipment, the ground was frozen, so they couldn't install it, so they are planning to do it, you know, within the next month or so.
Okay, good.
Right.
Yeah, yes, Taylor.
What Allison was just saying, I totally agree with her, and that's a fantastic idea. You know, I've been thinking a lot. In general, about how we can use our trust funds. More or perhaps more effectively, I think particularly in this, if there's no better time in the present, in my opinion, for those trust funds to be used. To support people in Camden that need help. That's what they're there for. So I really would be in favor of being creative and finding ways to to get outside the box about using those trust funds. And just the way like Allison, yes, and I think that's a really great idea.
Let's get back to our budget discussions on dams. Which is.
Get back. Were we having a budget discussion about dams? I don't know.
We're having an idea discussion about going forward, which I totally agree with, but in terms of, I call Works Project Administration. Budget.
And I guess the reason that I felt like it was relevant to the Parks discussion was with Parks Maintenance and whether there are ways to to do that, but.
And there are ways to do that, and I think it's on the table. Dams. Any comments on the dams twenty something thousand dollars?
Yeah, this is a. I appreciate that we're getting better. At trying to figure out, trying to make this a little bit more accurate in terms of. You know, the actual cost. Of the dams and putting, you know, all that time that or some of the time that Dave Olstridge spends running around to each one of them. Do we, we've not yet figured out. Which part of our insurance comes, like, the additional cost of insurance? Based on the dams at all, have we, Audra? That's all too hard to. Not just, not health insurance, but insurance, you know, our.
Yeah, property and casualty.
Exactly.
Yeah, um. Where did we run into a snag with that? I think. Gosh, I think it was. They kind of look at them all together, so it's really hard to parse out one specific dam. If that makes any sense. I don't, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can certainly, you know, get it updated based on what our projected premium is going to be for this year, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's just at some point it would be interesting, and it's, you know, if we had, like, the Montgomery Dam, there've been a lot of safety concerns with that in the past with. Just even when it's in its perfect condition, people. Walking on it and the sleuth sway and all of that. I don't know how much of that stuff gets taken into consideration by the insurance company, but, um. It would be, it would be good to find out at some point.
Sure, sure. On to Cemetery Association and Cemetery Maintenance.
My. Comment, if that's okay, Bob.
Yeah, sure.
Would. Be that. I, I support what. You know, Audra's proposal in terms of reducing the amount. That taxpayers are funding due to the really healthy balances that we have in the trust funds, but. It's still, it is so confusing to look at this, and so for the average person. To look. At this, and I don't even know if we're in the right part of the cemetery. Thing here, to look and and not just come to the conclusion that we've. Cut cemetery maintenance. When you look at it, it looks like we're, the town's going to be spending. A lot less. It's not this portion of the, but where is, where's the part that shows? Mason, it's not a great, though, that's really, really nice. Thank you.
Is this the right part to look when Allison's talking?
Where's that? Where's the, I'm looking at it right here, but.
The weird, the weird thing is there's a, you know, the offsetting revenue that the town.
Okay.
The Cemetery Association. So it's just this odd. Odd system where we pay the Cemetery Association. We also pay for, you know, the costs associated with maintaining the cemeteries, and then the Cemetery Association reimburses us. A portion of the cost of maintaining the cemeteries. So it's like.
Right, so where is the part that reflects?
They pay us back, and then we pay them, then we pay them their trust fund.
Right, and where is it? Because I had a comment from. Somebody looking at it. Where is it? A reduction in revenue somewhere that we're, that we see what you did? Where is it obvious the change that's being made here?
Sheet on a page, what page is it? Sorry, I'm scrolling down to look at the page number. It's on page thirty three, and it's at the very top, and it says. Camden Cemetery Association.
Right, yes, at the top, above the cemetery maintenance line, right, okay.
Yeah.
It would. It would be great to have. I, it's a constant issue throughout the budget, and you don't want it to be five thousand. Pages long with descriptions, but. It's just so hard to look at this and know what's going on.
And honestly, I I agree with you, Allison. It took me. A lot of time sitting down with Marlene saying, wait, what do we do? How do we do that? We. We pay for the maintenance, and then they pay us, and then we reimburse their trust fund? Like, how does that make any sense? Why can't we just cut out one of those steps? But.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's kind of the, they've figured over the years, the best way to kind of show how money flows between the town and the Cemetery Association and. You know, how everything.
Yeah. There is no note in here, though, explaining what's different this year. And I think it would be important. For people to know, so I guess the note would go right underneath. The twenty five oh one. Line or the twenty, no, the twenty. You know, straight up here. To.
It could say something like recommending no reimbursement of trust funds due to healthy balance of.
Yeah, right, you know, so because because it's a big change, so to have it printed there, what, you know, what your your brief justification for that was. Would be good, and and there are a few other places. Where I think it's easy for us, especially, and probably even more so for town staff, to forget what is not known by the average person. So trying to, and if we had a little bit more time. With the budget, and maybe some of the notes can be cleared up even after we vote to approve it, but it would be good if. Maybe some of us and even like a. Some, a couple of people who aren't so close to the fire would look through and point out. Areas where notes could be improved. It's not really on the top of my list of things I really want to do over the weekend, but. We should probably try to force ourselves to do it a little bit.
I agree with you, Allison. It's always helps to be clear for anybody reading this. So let's clarify the Cemetery Association footnote as you see fit, Audra, with with your team. Any other comments? The cemetery, we'll move on to. Well, debt service, we just have the town's required payments on on principal and interest. Is that correct, Audra? These are all required payments that we have to make for all of our existing bond debt.
Have we reached out? Is, does it ever ha, I know a lot of individuals and businesses are being encouraged to reach out to lending institutions and ask if there is. You know, a program where interest is being waived or. You know, you could pay down additional because interest is being waived during such and such a period, or. Is there any benefit possible for municipalities? Under similar circumstances?
I do, I think with some of our loans and lease purchases, that's an opportunity, not with the bonds, and that's something Jody and I have talked about, but, you know, she's been in the midst of. The budget process, so I think that that's something, once we get this behind us, we can start, you know, looking into. Trying to see if we can get better terms on some of our loans.
Right.
Right, and that, I mean, that that kind of stuff is is one of the reasons that makes me. Feel like I do just kind of want to get the town budget. Approved and the and the ordinances voted on and get that whole thing. Behind us so that the, you know, town employees can really focus on not the. Tangled complexities of trying to use last year's budget for this year's work and all of the headache that is associated with that, but getting on to some of these. Other issues and opportunities, so, thanks.
Good, good comment. Moving on to, well, I think I just jumped ahead too much, too far. Hold on a second. I think. Whoops. What the? Hold on, give me one second, please. I screwed up my computer, and I hit the wrong button and wound up at the beginning.
Don't you hate it when that happens?
To me all the time. One second, and we're on. Yeah, we're on capital reserves now. Capital reserves line, which is has been modified. A little bit from department head to town manager to, well, not so much from the Budget Committee. I do have a comment, but does any one of you have any comments on this on this budget?
I appreciate the fact that Audra is able to identify some places that we can already reduce it.
Well, well, actually, there's one, but I want this to, one increase, one decrease, but. As Audra, as you suggested, and it's five thousand dollars. And you had recommended five thousand dollars, and I think I honestly believe that's too low. For maintenance of our parks, but it should be, I don't know, but I think it should be something more. Again, to the numbers that we mentioned about. Parks, we're woefully behind in fixing the stuff we already have. Deferring it. The amount of money we're talking about is maximum twenty thousand dollars. Could be a compromise, but I think it needs to go higher.
Bob, looking at previous years, it was five thousand. They've been spending five thousand.
That's part of the problem, Mark.
Yeah. The department had put in twenty five thousand this year, knocked down to five, so. You know, I think at least, you know, there is a lot of maintenance to do going to fifteen or twenty, so we're being careful of the budget and also.
Yep.
The parks.
Yep, I would agree with that, Mark. I mean, you're talking about a total of fifteen or twenty. Increase.
Yeah, what, I'm curious what everybody else thinks.
Yep. Mark, yeah, Taylor.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree that that there are a lot of open spaces that we could. Need some serious maintenance beyond the regular stuff that would fall into capital reserves. I guess my my concern is as we're going through the budget line item by line item. I certainly want to make sure we come out of this with a flat budget as much as possible, so I think.
Yeah, well, I'm taking copious notes on increases and decreases, and believe me, we're going to have that discussion.
Yeah, I just, you know, in my mind, we're going to have to put some stuff off, given that.
I agree. Yeah, I would. I'm not suggesting to go back to the twenty five, but I I think something like fifteen is is reasonable, given the circumstances and given what we need. I mean, I would go all the way at twenty five because I don't think twenty thousand dollars adds very much, but I understand we're in a different situation, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go any lower than an additional fifteen thousand, which would. Ten thousand.
Then I'll make a motion that we raise it from five thousand to fifteen thousand. For the.
If we can find.
Parks and Open Space.
Allison, first, we have a second for that motion?
I second, I'll second it.
Okay. We can discuss it.
If if we can find people who are. Having financial problems who are Camden residents to hire for the work, then we could read, just like the trust funds reimburse the town for other things, we could. We, it would need, we'd need to really sit down and figure out a program that works, so we could reimburse ourselves to. You know, the the trust funds could fund that part of that line if we.
Okay.
Could get together to do it in the right way.
I love that idea.
I really think Allison's on to something with all this.
Right, I do too. I do too. It's just that. Another, the big deal, sometimes you have to spend a couple of dollars. One of the problems we've had is, yeah, this beach needs a little bit of work, but. Nobody's put in a pen to paper what needs to be done, so you determine whether it's a five thousand or one thousand dollar job. That's, it's it's a chicken and egg situation. We got to get the chicken first, and then Allison's egg, we can figure out how to how to hatch it and get it done and paid for. I totally agree with that, but this money needs to be spent, and there's been a reluctance to spend even a thousand dollars to. A sketch of what I do at Lake Beach to fix the problem we have with erosion there. Or or we'll, so by the way, some of this is done by park, by, what do we call it? Highway, Allison?
By highway.
Highway. Yeah, but that, I think, I still believe that we need to be add ten thousand to the fifteen thousand dollars. Any other, any discussion? Vote, Mark?
Good.
The motion to add ten thousand dollars to Parks Rec.
Oh, I, I thought I made it ready. I make a motion that.
For a vote.
Oh, hi, sorry.
Taylor.
All right.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
And bye bye also. One other.
I'm sorry, Bob, so what is the final number for you guys?
The total would be go from five to fifteen. On on that line item for Parks and Open Space. So the Select Board would read fifteen. The other comment I had is one of more of, it's kind of an awkward time to bring it up, is the snowball. Anybody surprised? I'm commenting on the snowball. The the twenty five thousand dollar reserve, I understand the concept of it, but. And and I know, for example, this year, Audra, we have a probably a twenty five or thirty thousand dollar loss to this budget. Current budget, we'll have to assume somehow, understand, but through that whole process, we maintained. Everything in the snowball budget, and we're not adjudicating that today, I know that, but I think. That was kind of a philosophical approach to the snowball, to put everything, including contingency, in the snowball budget, even if it shows not so hot, so we can make logical decisions about it. This business entity that's supposed to be managing financially itself. And we put twenty five thousand dollars into the reserve here, which completely understand why, and we're probably going to need it next year. We're asking taxpayers to fund upfront. Potential losses that are big, that are logically going to be coming down. Because of snowball operations, and then we have a cat problem here in a minute. I'm saying is we shouldn't, at this point, put this in this budget for taxpayers to pre-fund a loss. We should. For, we'll get it. Hello, when we, this is, this is worse than kids, Allison. We should, we should. Address this when we get to the snowball budget, and even if it should show, otherwise, we don't get into discussing whether we can afford a groomer or not at this point in time, or whether we can afford to do anything because the. Snowball budget is currently showing, you know, break even or positive. So that's just a philosophy. Allison.
So. We had many philosophical, we have had many philosophical discussions about the snowball budget, and I believe that the reason. That we started doing this recently was. Because of these philosophical discussions where what. I noticed, and I think others noticed too, is that snowball staff. Are constantly feeling an extreme pressure to make that a quote unquote profitable business, and some of their. You know, their their decisions, it's like they're a little bit crippled because they. It's like this whole risk reward thing and taking a chance on a new thing, and we weren't putting them, it felt like our our budget, and the way we're doing it wasn't putting them, and probably still isn't. In a position where they understand that we, the community loves the snowball, the community is okay, the vast majority, overwhelming majority. Are okay with taxpayers funding some of the snowball, just like they're okay with the taxpayers funding every other park. That we have, and so this went in there to kind of say, all right, we're going to give voters a chance to vote on all this. We're going to be upfront that, yeah, every year, the town's going to put in a little bit of money for a snowball. Reserve so that we have money, and and the idea of this was to try to be even more. Reserve so that we have money and and the idea of this was to try to be even more transparent, so. I see what you're saying. I'm curious what other thinks.
Yeah, no, I I agree with Allison. I think that, you know, given that philosophically as a board over the past few years, you've moved towards. Putting more of the true expenses associated with the snowball in the snowball budget. You also need to accept that on the other end of this is the fact that. If we're not going to run it completely like a business and recognize that there is a community component to it and there's a. There's a side of it where we're making decisions that might not bring in the most revenue or make or, you know, we might not hit our budget targets, but the. Community likes it and it's better for the community that we need a fund like this that we constantly are. Putting money into on the general fund side to make up for some of those potential shortfalls. In the snowball operating budget and not having that sort of fun or this sort of fun and being upfront that that's what we're doing, I think. Puts us in that position where we're. Not being honest about the cost to taxpayers of the snowball.
Mark. I also think it's important, two things, it's if we don't have it here, then we might have to go to people. You know, when when we have a bad year, I'd like to head that off, but also in in any conversation like this. You know, I think it's important to remind us and everyone watching that the budget for the snowball is not about the profit and loss of the. Operation of the snowball. It's also that it brings in two or three million dollars a year into our local economy. And, you know, it's hard to quantify that into a budget, but it's a huge bonus to the town. People need to remember the the amount of monies that come from outside of our area that come into this community and make it a really true. Year-round community.
Yep, no debate on that, Mark. This is more, this hasn't been done in the past, by the way. We haven't put in reserves. We had discussed two years ago about taking whatever came out of the snowball at one year was $60,000 of positive. In the in the green, we wanted to spending it on rather than putting it into a reserve account for future. Rather than putting it to a reserve, a bucket to reserve for bad years, we spent it on other new equipment repairing.
Not spend it on new equipment. We spent it on the maintenance to an essential piece of equipment.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Maintenance of the groomer. We spent it on maintenance. This is a new approach and frankly, as I see this fine long term, this may be the first step towards putting it back in the general fund. Why do we even have it as a separate business entity? Why not just put it in a general fund? That's what we're doing here, where the town is funding its. Positive and negative and there's no, there's no reason to have it as an independent business entity. I'm not saying we can't do that now. I'm just saying.
I thought we were gonna call it a special revenue fund or something like that.
Yeah, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we I believe Jody can comment on that. I believe in this budget year for the first time. If you noticed, Allison, good question. If you noticed in the audit report, it's still called an enterprise fund. Because there's complications and Joey doesn't need to get into all those, but she's she and Bill have worked on getting that into a. Special project fund, is that right, Jody? Yes, yes.
Special revenue.
Special revenue. It's it it next step could be putting it in the general fund and stop stop playing the games. I'm sorry, it's not a game. Stop playing the 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 accounting difficulties because I totally agree with you said this town, when I told people we might lose 25 or 30,000, the first comment was. That's not much. And you know, that's it. I agree with that anyhow. I I don't think it's worth belaboring here. I just wanted to point it out because in the future. Again, if I'm still around mentally or physically. I would probably push toward combining this into the general fund and stop making this look like it. To the to the point made about the feeling the pressure to make money or not, we can monitor that, like we do everything else, like Joey does every day with every account. To make sure we're on budget. That's that's easily done.
I just do wanna say one thing that the current setup allows snowball management to shift money in between lines. In a more flexible and maybe more. Business-like way that, you know, allows them to react a little quicker and maybe.
Yeah, it's the same thing with the select board. You've got sort of more autonomy over decision-making around. Snowball operations than you would if you. But I mean, again, philosophical.
That's let's make this a future discussion, not today. We're not, this is not big enough to go, you know, whacking around too hard. It's it, I I understand it. Where will we take the money this year for the losses in the snowball?
Well, I think at this stage, we don't know fully what the losses are gonna be because we haven't received all the revenue to date. The idea would be depending on whatever it is, it could be rolled over into the next.
If there, again, it's not worth, it's just a discussion point and not worth valuing. So the only thing we've changed there is the parks increased by $10,000. Onto capital improvements. This is where we have the police cruiser and the trucks and the. And the conference room AV and those other long list. And I believe the biggest changes here have been the elimination of Molino. The big numbers, just to focus on the big numbers, the.
No, they left that in.
No, that was taken out. No, it was taken out. I recommended it was taken out in the budget committee.
It was taken out. I know it was taken out. It's on it's on this list. It's taken out.
Yeah, I have it taken out. Line three zero zero four.
Yeah, I have it out as well.
What was it? What was the number?
One forty, one forty, the bottom of the pages. It's in yellow. One of the yellows, but while you while you're trying to find that.
I found it, but I just felt like the budget committee discussion was to. Okay.
I think we're just waxing philosophical over whether.
I guess the the two that were, I've seen two, two, the ones that were taken out were the 25,000 for audio.
Visual upgrade.
Of the of the, what's this? This is the WCSR. I thought that went away.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
It's supposed to be the the French.
I just gotta get the last one still. Was that the was the Molino Bridge? Those are the big ones that were taken out. That's.
So to the harbor part, sorry, I was just not going, I printed it off and so I couldn't see lines. Walkway for $55,000 is still in there?
Yes.
Yes.
I was thinking when I scrolled across, that was the bridge. Remind me again why that's essential to do right now?
We're able to piggyback on DOT's drainage project, so it's gonna be. Much reduced and also that's a project that can be funded with funds. So it.
Right, okay. Is all that DOT stuff still gonna happen?
That's my question to, you sure?
As far as we know, we have not, that one is is being put on hold.
I guess my question is, do we know?
And they're also paying us $19,000 for that easement to get that. Pipe from the walkway area to the harbor.
Right, I I don't believe they bid it yet.
No.
That's the, that's the question that Allison asked and I would ask the same thing. Their their projects have not run real well in the bidding process in the last year, so. We don't have the answer to that right now. But Molino is definitely out and the Washington Street Conference from AV is definitely got.
Another one that's out that I that I do think that we're gonna have to. Well, we're certainly gonna have to put either contingency or the energy conservation reserve towards. A portion of the energy conservation reserve towards is the. Finalizing the LED streetlight conversion because that is 20,000 over budget, but. I think between the, you know, the the remaining funds, it'll be in that energy conservation account and. A little bit of contingency, we can make up for that without having to, you know, impact the FY21 budget. So I just wanna draw attention to that. As well as the, I'm proposing that we use 50,000 from the Harbor Projects Reserve to pay for the. Float replacements. So those are, you know, those are the major changes.
So with that, all that says, are there any comments on the changes?
The voting booths are gone as well.
I'll just begin, that's such a small number. I'm not gonna.
Yeah, Bob, I have a question. Line forty-two sixteen for public works equipment. The department head was 60,000, town manager and budget committee is 120. What's up?
So that was really just a question of how we were gonna finance that and. I came to the conclusion that it would be best if, because that expense is ultimately gonna be split between wastewater and the general fund. So what we decided the best way to go about financing it was to. Completely, the general fund will finance the purchase of that excavator. And so we've got, you know, the the expense and then we've got the corresponding revenue, which is a lease purchase. Payment which comes in on on the revenue side, and then when it when it comes to the debt service payments that you'll see over the next 15 years. Half will be paid for in the general fund and then half will be paid for in wastewater. And that's, you know, when we originally were doing the budget, we thought, well, do we split it evenly? Half between general fund and half between wastewater, and then we decided against doing it that way. So that's, that's why there's a 60,000 versus a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference.
Any other comments on the? On the on these projects?
I would just say that. That we're getting some comments on the YouTube channel. Our less says, I feel like the budget committee did a really good job of working to bring in a budget that gives relief to taxpayers. Within our control. It pains me to see these ads ends from the select board.
Any other comments?
What's going on? What's happened with the police cruiser?
I mean, that's what I'm asking. It's.
Audra felt that it was something we could. We should still have at this point.
Oh, I thought, okay. I mean. Always need like these full. Pursuit rated vehicles, given that all a lot of what they do doesn't. Require criminal transport and. That sort of thing, but I.
They they do. In my experience, those are the the type of vehicle they have is unique and important.
All right. I mean, I know that you were just suggesting taking it out completely. And I was the one arguing to put it back in, so I I get, but. My reason for not wanting them to have to wait right now is mostly I wanna make sure that they, you know, have the vehicles that they need to be driving around. Delivering things and doing all all kinds.
And I think that I think. I think that makes perfect sense and something, you know, when Audrey suggested that was one of the few places we could. We could, we could cut and maybe fund later if it turns into an emergency, but I think you're right about. Police are doing extra work right now. It's not a time to cut back.
And just for the record, I'd prefer that we that that you didn't cut that.
Right, okay, so.
So you were misquoted at the.
No, I would, I would say that like if you were really desperately looking for. Cuts and you need sort of one large item that, you know. Maybe we could go a few months without and then reassess as to whether you need it and maybe use contingency to fund it. That would be it, but I I'd say ideally. Ideally, it would stay in.
And and that's fine. But I'm fine with leaving it in.
So it feels to me like we're really getting, we're we've eaten up pretty much all of our opportunities to. To offset the increases that we've.
No, no.
I mean, we're, yeah, you can say take more from surplus, sure, but. It feels like in terms of the expense budget, we're defying the.
Yeah, we're we're the better part of $100,000 in ads at this point, Allison, to your point, and we don't have any deducts. At this point, now in terms of the expense side, you're correct.
When we wrap this up, and I'd like to go through all the ads, look at where we are.
Absolutely will. We absolutely will, but we have to through, we can do one of two things. We can go, this is getting near the end of the expenses. And then we can talk about the income side, which or where we where we have contingency surplus and those other things, but Allison's point, she's correct. We have, and Jody can correct me, but the better portion of $100,000 we've added in total. So far, without making any changes to this line of capital improvements.
Yeah, I think everything just is hinging upon, I'm staring at the contingency line that was voted at 130,000 by the. Budget committee, so I can't really answer that yet. I'm not sure how you guys are gonna go.
Without the 140, any change, we're at about eighty-six or ninety thousand dollars of ads. So far.
Right, and so what the budget committee really wanted to do was to try to cut back in other areas, but then give us. The flexibility to respond to needs as they arose and. And here we are saying, no, we wanna tie our hands to these certain lines and consider removing. Contingency, I just.
Yeah, I. I kind of was thinking about the same thing when we were talking about adding a couple of those lines since we're, can we just talk about the contingency analysis? It seems like we're there.
It would be the next item. There there are there. Try to be simplistic a little bit. You we've got about, I said about roughly eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars of ads we've done. Next item would be the total contingency. It was raised by $100,000 to from forty to $140,000. And the other major element in the in the credit side would be. Returning money to the taxpayers in the form of surplus, which is currently at $750,000.
Well, I have a question about the contingency, but as the discussion was happening. And the budget committee, there was a couple of times where we're talking about that some of that may already be committed. Jody, can you? Is any of that contingency committed in any ways?
I think at your last select board meeting, there was some commitment with the.
Right.
The Opera House appointing of the.
It was 15,000.
But that's just out of our current, that that doesn't cut into any of the the hundred thousand would be all.
Right, Jody, what is the, what is the contingency account as it stands today?
It's at 97,000.
Ninety-seven thousand, maybe taking away 15, you're probably around $80,000 already in your back pocket. So the $80,000 in back pocket plus the 140 brings us up to the better part of, you know, not quite a quarter of a million dollars, but.
We carry that 80 forward that we assume we won't be used between now and June.
So so we can cut back here somewhat.
Oh, yeah.
No, but they, this is the same information that the budget committee got, so.
I don't know that they heard about the how much was in the account already. I don't remember that being a major part of the conversation.
It was, we definitely talked about it and the, so are we sure that you're that taking 98, that the only thing in addition? I I have strong memories of quite often funding things from the select work contingencies, so I'm. Not convinced that if 98 was what we started with at the beginning of the fiscal year. That is, I just have a hard time believing that we've only paid for the Opera House repairs out of that.
To be clear, what is what is on the books today for contingency through April 25th, 2020?
You have a balance of 97,287 dollars and 49 cents.
And when was, but i- is that what it said in the audit report for FY 2019 or is that?
We're talking about now, not last year.
Right, so what happened was, we started FY20 with a $40,000 appropriation. And the select board voted to carry forward FY19, which was 59,000 and some change. So that's what brought you guys up to. Close to 100,000.
And then over this past year, you think we've own, the only time that that's been used was for the Opera House repairs?
That's what's anticipated, yes.
Again, to where we are, we're probably at with the 140, we're probably would have turning July 1st. About 80 plus 140, $220,000, if my math is correct, and no, that's not correct. Yeah, it's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in total contingency available to the town. So I was gonna, I was gonna make a suggestion, thinking that, not thinking about the carry forward from fiscal year twenty, that we add another ten thousand to it, and make it one fifty. But, you know, I think, I think two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the contingency is a, is a pretty reasonable sum. Maybe that's a place where we can cut a little bit. I do agree with the, the conversation that I think Allison's trying smartly to point out to the budget committee was having that. We can't really plan for what we don't know, so the more we have in contingency to pay for things that come up, the better off we will be when that happens, so.
So I would, I mean, and, and thinking that, I'd like to go back and, you know, some of the little things that I increased, I'd rather just stick closer to what the budget committee talks about, because it, it did make sense to me, and go back and take away some of these little increases, like the shade trees and the, and we can deal with those things as opportunities arise.
We could still do it.
Let's take out the cruiser now, and just let, let that be evaluated, and come to us when, when Randy presents it, and we can have the discussion then. We do have a really healthy contingency, and I think it was really clearly the budget committee intention to-
Let's, let's start from there, let's start from that, he has a good idea. What does our total increase look like, Jody, with the ads and de-packs we've done in the to- total, total?
So, taking into consideration the adding back in the three percent COLA, and assuming a forty thousand dollar contingency right now, you're at thirteen thousand, two hundred increase, that's what's netted it out.
What percentage over fiscal year twenty? No, it was really not, because we haven't take, we haven't taken out the hundred thousand yet. We should look at the, look, use the budget committee line for-
Right, that's what I did. So the, the budget committee voted in a gross general fund expense of nine million, four sixty-seven, oh eighty-seven. And everything that you have changed and adding back in the three percent COLA, we're at nine million, four hundred fifty-three thousand eight, which is two point nine percent below FY twenty gross general fund.
I, I guess, I was, my question is, I thought we added about eighty-seven thousand, and no deducts. Do we add deducts also? Do we, do we, I don't remember any deduct, deducting we did.
No.
We should be higher. Yeah, if the, if the budget committee was at a two point one percent net decrease, we should be low, you know? They're at two point seven, Taylor. Right, at the gross, right? That was two point one. Yeah.
The, the net, the gross general fund D for the budget committee is minus two point seven percent.
Right.
And the town is minus two point nine percent. That's just for expenses.
Yeah, okay. Give me the general fund total for the, for the, we have, did we, the select board have affected, right, nine million for what?
Nine million, four hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven, that's the gross expense.
The gross expense is lower than the budget committee. Can't, how can that be?
That's right, because I have not added the hundred thousand in, the only, forty thousand, because you haven't had a vote yet.
With the hundred thousand back in for contingency, what is our, that would make us nine million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight eighty-seven.
That's correct.
What, now, what would the, the net decrease from last year with that number?
When you say net, are you talking?
Nine, the nine million, five hundred and two thousand, eight eighty-seven is what percent increase over FY twenty, or decrease?
One, minus one point eight percent.
Okay, okay, that, so that's where we're at, right, in company. We're, we're, we're at just under two percent, because we added in and added in. So back to our discussion about the being, you know, and I agree, we'd, I'd like to be close to the budget committee's total. We can affect a number of things, we can certainly, as I think Allison suggested, we could, we, we have a, I feel very confident, given how we normally run through a fiscal year, and, and wind up with, you know, we wind up oftentimes adding to surplus, because bottom line for that is, we wind up with more income, for whatever reason, and less expenses, for whatever reason, that's been the history. So we, I feel confident in, but the contingency levels and blah, blah, if we do take something out of, like, we could probably easily decide during the year to fund it through other mechanisms other than where, where it's currently in the budget. Taylor?
Yeah, I tend to agree with you, Bob. I think I was coming into this concerned about what our, what our decrease over last fiscal year is gonna be, and standing in the back of my mind that we missed discussing tapping into another fifty thousand or so surplus. I'm very happy with a one point eight percent decrease over last year. I think that it was important that we sent a message to the town that we are on top of this, I heard that stated during the budget committee meeting, that we are on top of this, I think.
Okay, okay, so bottom line, as we are saying, Taylor, is we, you're, you're okay, you're feeling good with the nine million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar number?
Yeah, particularly since we feel like we have a contingency of two hundred and twenty thousand, I think that's healthy. And I think that it also sends the message that will, you know, give us enough to be prepared for some unknowns, and a one point eight percent decrease over last fiscal year sends the message that we're trying to keep things under control from town and taxpayers.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mark.
Audra, let me ask a question, before we started to look at this, and to bring things down, directed you to bring things down, where was your original budget compared to last year?
It was a two point seven percent increase over last year.
Okay, so we're almost at a four percent decrease from what we were originally going. So that's, I think that's a very strong decrease in terms of looking through this and, and making the proper recommendations, taking care of what we need to, but getting rid of, of things that we can postpone.
Jenna, any comments?
I'm all set.
All right, Allison?
Have, have you, since we haven't looked at the revenue part yet, I didn't see when I looked quickly, anything about the wastewater, how much of Bill's salary do you think we could charge to the wastewater department?
A hundred thousand dollars, no, I'm just kidding.
Because I, I, I mean, I have no real idea, but I think it's something.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I, I strongly favor, even as a wastewater customer, strongly favor being, at least re, in, in a, we've made this push to try to be transparent and real in our numbers, and hiding wastewater expenses in the general fund budget isn't in sticking to that. So it seems like a great opportunity to at least make back a little bit of Bill's cost.
Well, I don't know-
I can't tell if, I'm, I'm looking at Audrey, maybe she thinks this is not smart, or is it not in there, or is it?
I think that's perfectly reasonable, I'm just looking for the latest copy of the wastewater budget, so I can make a recommendation.
While you're doing that, Audra, I thought we had a discussion once about the, I mean, Bill, you probably don't have it in front of you, but when we talked about the whole change in legal approach, we, we talked about all the accounts that we've billed all through the years for wastewater, do you, do you have an idea what magnet, order magnitude, not specifically, is it two thousand, one thousand, ten thousand? That may help to answer Allison's question.
Really hard to-
Okay.
Piece together the bits and pieces, but maybe five percent of my time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it wouldn't be a huge number, but it is a number, and we could use it as a gauge for doing some kind of transfer to, I agree with Allison, as it's like, as I put, put the money where it belongs, why it's being spent, I just don't know how much it is.
Eight thousand dollars.
How much?
Well, I think eight thousand dollars.
There's only five thousand budgeted for these.
Well, that needs, that needs to go up then.
Um, I think we're, we're looking at three thousand, Audra. I think five thousand is in engineering.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I might be looking at the wrong line.
I don't think that's reasonable, given the-
Right.
I mean, Bill is in a much better position to say what's reasonable and what's not, but it feels like with all the planned court actions and ongoing court actions and letters and-
Yeah.
Meetings that, every time we need to vote, that's gotta be a little bit more-
Just on the transparency, sorry, just on the transparency side of things, we did collect fees from the people we prosecuted, they, they reimburse the town.
The legal fees.
Oh, so when that works out, then-
Revailing party usually gets that, just while you-
Okay, so it's reimbursing the town, not the wastewater department.
No, it was, it was reimbursed through the wastewater, because that's the, we paid the legal court fees through wastewater, so that went right back.
Oh.
Okay, well, in which case then, you paid the legal, you paid Bill through the wastewater department?
That was when Bill was billing us as a-
Oh, right, oh, right, yes, of course, okay. So in this case, it, it, what I'm saying is still valid, right, that we would, for planning for next year?
We do that with audit as well, but, you know, pays their portion of the audit, so, yeah, you're, you're on the right track.
Okay, so let's at least put something, create a revenue line-
Okay.
That says, whatever Audra or Jody would like it to say, but-
Water legal reimbursement under departmental fees.
Yeah.
We could just start subcontracting Bill out, like, as a, like, pay per hour with the town attorney, and have a whole new revenue section.
Audra, you, Jody, you think five thousand dollars in that account?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Five thousand? I'm just, I just pulled the number out of the air, I don't have any basis for it.
I threw eight thousand, because I heard Allison, but you guys-
Allison, what do you think?
Well, when Bill said five percent of his time, and then, well, that doesn't work out then, no, it wasn't a great number.
Why?
Well, I, I forget, what was the total cost of Bill to us, including the health insurance and all of that, it was a pretty sizable number.
It was, so if, if we took his wages, FICA Medicare, and his, and his retirement, we, at five percent, would be ninety-six hundred.
Oh.
You're close, Allison.
Why don't we call it ten?
Well, also, you gotta, you gotta think, so, that's ninety-six hundred, and we would be thirty-three point three-three percent of that ninety-six hundred, because sixty-six point six is Belfast.
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's the number Jody gave us?
She gave you the total, I believe, yes.
Yeah, she gave you five percent of the total, but we're only thirty-three percent of that five-
One, one-third of, of ten.
Is that accurate, Jody?
No, that was five percent of his, his entire wages, thirty-three percent of that, we're at thirty-two hundred.
Also, Bob was closer.
That sounds perfect, let's do thirty-two hundred.
My guess-
Darn it, but it was my idea, so.
Allison's idea is to do it, and we should do it at about four thousand dollars.
Just needed to- We got there.
I'm not, yeah, it's okay, Bob's always gonna be better at math.
Uh, not really, not these days, but anyhow, one-third of ten is about thirty-five, I just said, you know, make it four thousand dollar round number, I think that's, we should make that transfer, and that's fine. There are, Jody will just need to affect that small number, there are other, one other place where we could, you know, increases in income beyond the ones we're considering now, one of them is, what about, is there anything, this is just an open question, we're contemplating ninety-five thousand dollars was reserved withdrawals, could that be increased? Right now, right now, we're taking, that, that number comes from fifty thousand dollars for harbor, stormwater damage, twenty, streets and sidewalks, twenty, which I think is low, and, and parking reserve, five thousand, maybe nothing here, but I just thought I wanted to ask the question.
I mean, you could, but you'd have to, like, you'd have to have a project or a activity-
Who offset it?
Yeah.
Don't.
Well, I mean, you could use more money from, like you said, streets and sidewalks, storm drains, that sort of thing, because we are doing all of that planning work.
Yeah.
Specific, two streets and sidewalk storm drain, it's a question of, like, at what level are you comfortable leading those reserve accounts?
Right, well, if I take another twenty thousand dollars from the streets and sidewalks reserve, it's already twenty thousand, so I bring it up to forty thousand, what does that do to that reserve account, Jody?
That was supposed to be like to get more sidewalks, I mean, I guess.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, and maybe it's not a good idea, I just wanted to-
So, right now, there's sixty thousand in the public work streets and sidewalks reserve, so you were talk, you were talking bringing forty, no?
Well, we already, the budget already have twenty, and the total, so that, is that already, that would be the sixty, then we're down to forty, and if my idea would go from forty to, to-
Twenty.
Yeah, that's right. Never mind. You're trying to open all the kimonos. So that's about it, we're, other than the four thousand, we, we affect if we want the contingency, but, you know, you're, you're, I think philosophically in my mind, that that's large, and it is large, contingency gives a lot of possibilities to be able to, to future buy something, I like, like it, because I think we should not have to put it into the budget, but that's just my feeling, Taylor?
Um, yeah, I wanted to kind of have Audra restate the state revenue sharing comment that she made at the budget committee on Thursday, I think that's important, that the numbers that I had written down were that initial estimate started at four hundred and fifty thousand, it's now two hundred and fifty, which you consider considerable, I'm just curious if you would comment on that.
Yeah, so, I guess to kind of restate what I was saying to the budget committee, I very conservatively budgeted initially three hundred thousand for FY twenty-one, for state revenue sharing, what we would receive from the state, however, you know, we were projected to collect about, I think the state sent out four hundred and fifty thousand, being what we could expect, you know, when the budget was initially prepared, so I was already sort of under budgeting by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when I moved it from three hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, that was already moving it from a place where it was a very, very conservative figure, so that's why I was confident that two hundred and fifty thousand is pretty realistic, even given our, our current circumstances with the economy shutdown.
I think it's right, pretty conservative.
Yeah, okay, thank you, right, we hope that obviously comes in higher than that, but I just wanted to-
Well, I mean, to put things in perspective, I, I told some of you, like, it's, it, the town of Camden, Maine, I know in two, our last number I had was two thousand seventeen, I think, contributed ninety-seven million dollars in sales tax revenue to the state, from all of that, and plus, 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 and, and our share is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But neither here nor there, this year, obviously, that's not gonna be the contribution of our town, it's gonna be much less, and it bodes to state revenue sharing being challenged financially, but I don't know how to project that, I, I would be comfortable with a little larger number, but, you know, I, not hellishly larger. Is as much as three hundred thousand dollars, Audra?
I mean-
I know-
This seems like it's playing a game a little bit, it's just playing a game, it's not, it's not changing something substantive, but-
Yeah, I, I agree with Allison, I, I think at this point, we just leave it where it is, because we don't know.
All right. Just wanted to hear the process again for how we got to two fifty.
So, Jody, then, are we at, we had nine million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, eight eighty-seven, is that changed by the-
Can I make a quick comment about the revenues, just?
Yeah, sure.
Like Chris Farley said, I don't have a dog in the fight, because I live in Rockport, but I have easily collected, I'm talking vehicle excise tax now, just on this history, we've easily collected a million dollars every year. Right now, we're, we're looking at propose eight hundred and fifty- Right now, we're, we're looking at proposed eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I feel like you guys could probably raise that as opposed to hitting state sharing.
Yep.
I think you could raise that a little bit. I don't know what the magic number would be, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, but I think confidently, we could do that.
Right.
Vehicles does seem like more of an essential thing that, um.
Well, it's, it's, it's another bill that people have, existing cars, we all have to pay our excise tax, we have to pay our property tax. I, I think it's very logical to bring that number to at least nine hundred thousand, maybe nine twenty-five.
I was gonna say nine hundred, bring it up fifty thousand dollars.
Do we have to move to that, Mark?
I make a motion that we raise the vehicle excise tax, uh, number to nine hundred thousand from eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, um, discussion. Um, vote, Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
And Bob, I five zero, so that brings us fifty, so we're, my numbers were just a tad, actually right at nine and a half million dollars.
So where you stand right now for revenues, you're at three five hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and six dollars. For gross expense, you are at nine million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So that brings a net increase to your budget at point one percent.
What? An increase over last year?
Yes.
How did we get to, from, I'm totally confused.
That is, that's because, we have not added the, the six hundred and fifty thousand is from surplus. You guys still have six fifty from surplus in your side, in your part of the budget. That's not the seven hundred thousand, so.
Also.
Seven fifty. Um, a minute ago, when we discussed nine million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand expenses, that was a negative one point eight percent and total, but, but the revenues went from, what, what percentage change did the income change to? What percentage was that?
The revenue change, the, um, let's see, revenues.
We, we really should talk to, um, where the budget committee's number is, because that's, that's what I'm kind of using as a reference. If, if you say, if you, I'm a little concerned if you're telling me now that we have six.
Right.
And seven fifty, then I'm getting lost in the equation. I'm trying to compare where we, where we are in total, but also where we are in relation to the budget committee.
Okay, so all of your revenues, all of your revenues, you are five point zero one percent lower than, than FY twenty. The budget committee with their seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation, they are three point seven seven percent below current year, just in revenues.
Well, I just don't see any reason why we, at this point, we haven't, you know, adjudicate, discuss the seven fifty going down to six fifty. So if we put the seven fifty in to our number, give me the, give us the numbers again.
So you.
See, the budget committee is the starting point for everything.
So with the, um, with the seven fifty, um, you're two point three two percent below this year's revenues. The budget committee is three point seven seven percent below this year's revenues.
Well, that's because we just added some money to revenues. Um, okay, all right. And the expenses side, we're still, um, okay, okay, that makes sense. So.
Does that impact the net, um, expenditure overall?
Yes.
Yep, so for net, now the select board recommendation is minus one point five five percent over this current year.
Dollars, give me dollars, please, dollars to.
One hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Um, that's for expenses? Okay, so what is, what is the total, total expense number for select board line? Nine million, five fifty-three?
One second, sorry. Um, so total gross expenditure is nine million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Okay, all right, now if I take the total expenses minus the, including the seven fifty for surplus, minus the, the income that for the select board, what is our net, net number for the select board versus the, um, the budget committee?
So the select board net budget would be five million, nine hundred, thirty-one thousand, six hundred, eighty-one dollars.
Okay.
The budget committee net is five million, eight hundred, ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred, eighty-one dollars.
So the difference percentages. So the difference is about thirty-two thousand dollars. No, sorry, sorry, yeah, thirty-two thousand dollars.
And the percentage for the net, the net decrease for the select board would be one point five five percent. The decrease for the budget committee is two point one percent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at, uh, when I'm, when I'm looking at a different, I look at the numbers and, um, basically, uh, I mean, I mean, to me, it's good news. The difference between the budget committee and the select board is, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's the total between the two, and I, 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 that's, that's great. Um, because I mean, a couple, I know, I know there are differences of opinion of what's in and what's out, I get all that, but I, I think to the, I think especially in this, in this time, especially whereas we're approaching this, this vote, if, uh, this, this is very positive news to me. Now, by the way, that includes the seven fifty. Does, does anybody in the select board want to discuss the surplus of seven fifty anymore?
Uh, I was gonna suggest taking another fifty, but I'm very comfortable with where it's at now.
At the seven fifty?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, um, yeah, it tends, we, we wanted to be more aggressive, we could be, but you know, I don't think we need to, um, at this point in time, and I don't want Jody to get any heartburn, I don't need any sleep insurance for during the day, um, you know, remember the backdrop of all of this, you know, these sixteen point seven percent, and I'm sorry, Allison, I ignored you.
Oh, no, I mean, I'm not sure, I've been having it for a long time, I didn't, um, and maybe it's not the right time, but, um, would, would it make sense to put something in the budget in terms of a revenue line to hold the town's feet to the fire in terms of selling surplus equipment? Like, put something in there that's some kind of, no?
Yeah, you can.
Is that a goal, like?
I, I just, I don't, you know, it.
I think.
Just to reflect the, the, that. I always think of the budget as, as a communication document in so many ways, and
Yes.
to reflect, to put that in there, to reflect that that's a, that's a desire and that's a revenue goal, and that's something that we're trying to do to. I know it's very difficult to come up with something realistic, but.
But it could be a total guess at this point until we get that inventory.
Well, the, it's, it's.
I mean, we know a few things that could at least be a few thousand dollars.
You can put a ten thousand dollar item, it wouldn't show anything. The, the issue right now is like, people always talk to me about, oh, it's gonna be a bad year, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sell my boat, they said, yeah, good luck. Um, this market is, is kind of negative for selling stuff, and if you do, but if you put in a, you know, a ten thousand dollar, I, I wouldn't put a lot of money in that, Allison, but it's good to have it, have it maybe just as a tickler for the future. It's up to you. Up to you guys.
I mean, I, that's what I want, because then some future select board or budget committee will be like, at one point, they were thinking of this, like, it is possible for the town to sell some of its old stuff. Um, but I'm not strong, it doesn't, it's not a, it's, it's a side note, it's not a big deal to me.
If the board wants to move on, you know, putting a ten thousand dollar placeholder, I don't have a problem with that. I don't feel strongly about it either way.
I think Audra didn't like it, and so, um, because she has more experience in budgets, so.
Right.
But she'll be thinking about it for next year, I'm sure, and.
Well, you know, maybe we should put a line item in for it with a zero right now, but.
Well, actually, there's, there's already a line in there that's.
Oh.
Missile, is it miscellaneous revenue or?
It says sale of surplus equipment slash property.
Oh.
We got it.
I knew I got the idea from somewhere, um. Let's put, and what does it say? What are we expecting? I, I'm not looking, I can't see it right now.
We're expecting a big goose egg for that line right now.
Oh, well then, come on, we gotta put something in there. I would move that we increase it to ten thousand dollars.
Have a second?
I'll second that, I think it's realistic.
I'll dig stuff out of the landfill if we have to, and.
All right.
Just, quick, quick question, uh, Audra, is that, you think that's a realistic figure to start with? Because it may.
It, it's, it's no. Good idea, put it in there, it's a good tickler, anymore.
The tannery.
I'll come to you, I'll come to you with a report if I don't.
Or, or, or a bill, um.
We'll just sell one sliver of the tannery.
Let's, uh, let's vote on it, Taylor?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob, I also, good, so that, um, total, total, um, would bring us a select board and, um, net, net down to five million, nine hundred and twenty, one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. I'd like to, um, make.
So now there's a twenty-three thousand difference between us and the budget committee?
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct. So.
Okay.
And we're gonna go to summary motion, um, of, um, the totals, I'm gonna make sure I have the totals correct. So, we, one motion for, I believe it's nine million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, no, I'm sorry, nine million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars for total expenditures.
Correct.
Uh huh.
I need a motion for that.
Uh, so, some, some motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Oh, what?
I don't know, I'm struggling with the idea of voting my conscience versus voting unanimously to like, you know, not make it seem like there was.
I get it.
Not send the impression that there was massive opposition, but I really feel strongly that the fact that we didn't even bend on the percentage of the cold up is three percent is just so out of line with what anybody is, is doing anywhere that it's even not normal for historical Camden, so I, I expected that some of you would want to put that back in, but not that you would want it to be the full three percent, um, we could make up that difference there, but, um, I don't want us to.
We're gonna move to the vote, Taylor?
All right.
Mark?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
I hate this, this is all, this is just too, I hate when we have to rush things, um, I, I, I guess.
And Bob, I also, to the number now for, um, uh, the, the, what I call the revenue number, what is that total number now, please?
Three million, six hundred, thirty-two thousand, two hundred, six dollars.
So a motion.
Second.
Hi. Second.
Taylor, discussion. A vote to Taylor?
All right.
Mark?
Hi.
Jenna?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Bob, I also five zero, so that, I'm not gonna do the math, we don't need to vote on the net, obviously, so, uh, that'll be our, um, approved, approved budget for FY twenty-one select board list. Um, that will, um, and I know it's difficult, um, difficult times, um, we're in good shape, um, I feel very confident with, with, with what we have right now. Um, and again, thank the budget committee for all their hard work. Uh, on to the next agenda item, which is a review of the proposed warrant language for, um, the, um, forthcoming someday, um, secret ballot to, to look at, um, all the matters that have to be, including the town report. I gotta pull up that file, gonna go find it now, I don't think I have it here.
I, I would ask that this part be tabled until a few days from now, it's twelve forty-five, we've been sitting here, not eating, not drinking, I don't, I do not feel that I can do my best thinking right now. I have not read every word of that warrant language. We don't even have the numbers put it, you know, we just voted on all these numbers, and then those numbers actually really need to go into the document so that we can just really be sure that we've, because we, we do this a lot where we've gotten, the ballot goes out to people, and then they're all frustrated with something that was confusing, and then we, then we swear that we're gonna go over it in more detail the next year, and sometimes we do that, but it does, I don't feel that I can have done that right now, and it seems if we're airing on the, you know, this, this, even just giving us until Monday as a, as a, just a quick, like, let us catch some typos, um, it, if, it's not going out to the printer right now anyway, so it's not, it's a Saturday, it's not going to the printer now.
Allison, are you suggesting we, we convene another, a special select board meeting on Monday?
I would, I would like to do that in order to make the final decision about June. And I, today, I'm not prepared to say, on your mark, get set, go, send this out to all the voters. We still have a lot of things to talk about, about, like, is it gonna be automatically sent out? Is it not? Is it, how much of a hurry are we in? What's the schedule for the town report? Is it important to the town report is available to people before they vote on the budget? I have a, a lot of questions, and I'm.
Yes, and that's why we need to really chunk this into pieces, and I agree, uh, the first step would be to improve the warrant language, one. Two, we've done, and by the way, they don't have to be done all the same meeting, well, um, I don't think it's practical. One meeting would be to, I'm just suggesting, one meeting would be to, you know, I thought it would be today, to at least look at the warrant language and see if there are any elephants we want to take, change with format and content while we have Bill here. Um, two, uh, I would think there would definitely be, well, either a workshop or a meeting to go over many logistics of not just the ballot, but also the town report. I, I think there's a lot, and then we can chunk them, we don't have to have them all done by Monday or Tuesday. I know Janice has done some work on starting the process on what's recommendation for who's doing what to who in the town report, and that, that we need to discuss. We also need to discuss with, uh, Katrina in place about issues, about the logistics of whenever we do this vote, to the question you asked, Allison, I agree. Um, we're not gonna do this all at one time, so don't overwhelm, let's not overwhelm ourselves. First task is, we got two options, we can just take a quick look at the general format and see, is there any comments from our attorney that we should consider in our view for a, today to be scheduled, um, special select board meeting to go over that warrant language, and that will be.
I need, I need at least a five-minute break before I can do that. I need, like, just go to the bathroom, like, make eye contact with my kids, this is challenging to do it on a Saturday, and.
Yeah.
I'm feeling.
That's fine, Allison, please go ahead, let's take a five-minute break. Um, and I'll just continue a conversation to, about whether, uh, what, what if, well, my bill's recommendation, but go, go ahead, we'll take a five-minute break, everybody start singing the song. Okay?
I actually have a delivery of lumber coming at one fifteen, so I'm gonna, I, that's all I got for today.
Okay, well, Allison, while you're, while you're gone, I'm gonna poll some of the individuals about times on Monday, but wait for you to come back before we decide anything.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I'm gonna step away, but Monday works for me anytime.
Mark?
But Monday works, quick question, how does that affect if we were to stay, stay to the June date?
Well, back to Audra.
I mean, let's, let's be realistic, we're not gonna make June.
Okay.
Right, that's the plain line, but, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Jenna, what does your schedule look like?
I can work to make myself available, it may not be a giant amount of time that I can give, but I can certainly devote some on Monday.
Right, and we'll wait for Allison to come back and chat with her, because this, this is draining, I totally agree, and, and I don't want to kill, uh, the, the town staff especially. Um, um, my brother Mark too would have been to, you know, damn the torpedoes, we're gonna do night, but I have to agree with the, the stuff that's up in the air right now, we gotta take a breath. And it'll probably be in July, but the good news to me is, we're doing, in a very exciting new ballot format and a very new idea, it's a chance for us to try something very creative and very different. Um, that, it's on June ninth or, and to, um, Jody's not there, but my concern had been about, you know, starting the July fiscal year with, you know, a new budget, but, um, one, this, I'm Audra, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the governor could always change the approval process and the budget also as part of this process.
Oh, yeah.
And two, um, from June ninth to, you know, July fourteenth, it's not a hell of a long time. It's, you know, it's three and a half weeks, whatever it is, so I don't see the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the problems with Trio and the implementation of new budget would. I was concerned if the, if the shutdown to, or, it's gonna push it out to August, September, then I say. When it pushes out to August, September, then I say, oh, that's not good from a budgetary perspective. So whatever this, this brings up an interesting point, what if the. Put the election off, I don't think they will, but to put their election off until August, we can still continue with those on July fourteenth. And we still have that option. So I, I've been on the same page, Mark, as you. I wanted to keep everything, add everything to date, assuming June ninth. But I, I reluctantly say that we may be facing the reality is July fourteenth.
And I. You guys are still talking about. What did I?
We, we were talking about you, but.
Well, I know, but I'm actually, this is like, if you say you're gonna take a break, then.
Oh, we would just, I.
Now I've missed the things that you've said. I, I think I just came back and you said you've changed your mind about this, or.
Oh, no, I, I, I was just waxing philosophical about the June ninth, July fourteenth thing. I had, I. My energies were all about balls to the wall going to June.
Yeah, I know.
And that's what I'm saying to myself in reality. The, the big thing to me.
Can we actually just wait for Taylor's not back either? Can we just? Like.
But while he, while he's coming back, the one question I did ask that you didn't get it, didn't get asked, are you available on Monday?
Um. Well, I, can we hear, I, what are our? So what are our deadlines that we have to keep to? Um.
Remember Monday. Mark asked a question of Audra about if we do Monday, how does it, does it eliminate June ninth and? Yeah, in, in, Audra's saying, you know, let's be realistic, um, that we're really gonna be looking at July fourteenth, so.
Okay, so that decision was made while I was gone?
Well, no, no decision. Um, we were just. Philosophical, we have to make that decision.
That's fine, but I need to hear that. So Audra thinks it's, so we're now really, we're really looking just at July.
Yeah, I don't think June, I think given all the uncertainty around, you know, the executive order from the governor and. Just everything else, I don't think it's realistic to think that we're gonna make a June deadline anymore. I don't think it's, I think it's wise. I think it'd be silly if we rushed forward with it because who knows what's gonna be, you know, issued in that executive order. So I think that. Given all of the moving pieces right now. June is not a very smart thing for us to be aiming towards.
Bill, do you want to comment?
Taylor, Taylor had a.
Uh, yeah, let me just, just, uh, Bill, before we go too far in this discussion, again, your opinion as to any. Um, recommendation regarding considering June ninth versus July fourteenth because of our charter, because of blah, 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 and because of anticipated executive orders. What do you?
I'm with Audra. I think we're so close to getting a clarifying order that may give us other tools. Um, it's a bit reckless to pick that, uh, June date right now. I'm, I'm significantly influenced by the, um, suggestion that we're gonna have an order from the judge of the, um, governor very soon.
Judge. Mark. Uh, real quickly, instead of trying to squeeze something in on Monday, why don't we just, we're not, the deadline is shifted, but why don't we just go for a regular Tuesday night? Uh, a regular time meeting if that fits everybody's schedules better.
Or how about as, as a group, because you guys have been, you, you guys have really done a lot of work lately. I know you're all tired. Maybe think about, um. When, how much time do you need to go over everything and feel comfortable with? Um, you know, sort of discussing this and making a decision. Um, so that you're not, you're, you're giving yourself some time to look over everything, because now we do have, you know, I don't want to punt this, but you do have.
Well, yeah, we do. I just want to make sure, uh, there's really, I, I see, again, I want to be clear, there's. Probably two or three things that we have to do. They don't have to all be done at the same meeting. I think the one, one we have to do, and we can discuss what you just said, is, uh. View and approval of the warrant language, and I think that's gonna take some time, so it's not gonna be done in thirty minutes. Um. And because, because we're talking about format, and we're talking about, you know, making it clear to voters and, and eventually it's gonna go to print.
And I, I'd say the most important things that you needed to achieve today, you've done them. You've, you've made the decision, you're gonna move forward with an all secret ballot town meeting, you approve the budget. So those are, those are really the critical things you needed to do today, and you did them.
Bill.
Here's a suggestion. Um, in light of the, this important, um, executive order that's coming out, why don't we just wait until whether it comes out Monday or Tuesday or whatever day? When we get the order, um, we could schedule the meeting with relatively short notice, uh, to the paper and posting it so that we can. At least be informed by that significant order, because that's gonna give us direction, but it's.
That makes so much sense.
Yes, thank, yes.
That makes so much sense to me.
I second.
Bill, we're not, we're not, we don't have it, Bill, what, what, well, this is just a question, would this executive order affect how we put a warrant together for election?
No, well, I, it might. There might be some language in there, um, again, that the, in comment.
Yes.
MMA is looking or has been discussing the idea that it would be a purely absentee ballot. Um, mechanism for voting, and there may be specific instructions that were, we are required to put on the ballot. I don't know yet.
Okay, that's just, that's why I want to be clear, because that really helps you make a decision to your point. Um, Taylor.
Uh, yeah, I, I one hundred percent agree with what Audra and Bill just said, um, and that has kind of been my concern from the beginning. All right. That, that, getting the budget done today, which we've done, and agreeing that we're going to be secret ballot only. Um, whenever the vote happens, were the two most important and kind of critical things to accomplish. And it makes a lot of sense to wait and see what that executive order says, so we have some information to make a, a properly informed decision when we need. Next week. Whenever that comes down.
Taylor, to that end, um, when you get a chance, would you email me your schedule for next week? So I can, you know, I'm, I'm, you're the, you're the one who gets taken away from the day or two because of your job. Um, not that others don't, but it, it's usually the first hurdle if you're not available at all. I try to work around those days.
Uh, yeah, so Wednesday and Friday, I'm, I'm out.
All right, any other conversation comments?
I, I agree with, with Bill recommended, let's table scheduling a meeting until we know, have more information.
Yes, I, we will, we'll keep our, we'll sit back with bated breath waiting for our governor to issue paper, right?
But also Janice, awesome job on, on this draft of the warrant. Um.
Yes.
That was a lot of work, and it, it, it looks pretty, pretty darn good to, to start with, and that must have been. I, I, I would not have wanted that job, um, and you're very good at it, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
And, and Jody, thank you for coming on Saturday morning, even though it wasn't your first choice.
Thank you.
You know, I did a great job on the budget, uh, budget committee and select board both. Um, it's not, it's not an easy one, it never is, but. Uh, we, I think I'm really, really happy we get past that. That's a, that's a lot of work, Mark.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the select board.
Second.
Second by Jenna, discussion. I'm, I promise Mark to be no nays today. That's vote, Taylor.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Jenna.
Hi.
Ms. Allison.
Hi. Not only ready.
Thank you all so much, and yes, to Janice and, and Bill and the, and the Jody and, uh. Audrey, you guys have just done phenomenal amounts of work in a short time. I am so impressed. I would have bet a lot of money.
Budget committee.
Warrant stuff on today's packet. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
Your afternoon is supposed to be, I heard it's nice outside.
It looks like it.
Thanks.
All right.
Good job.